The city attorney direction.
All right, great. We did, we did indeed. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to this regular meeting of convening and calling it to order. I just want to go through a little bit of process of the public comment here for our virtual city council meetings that were held, holding under Governor Newsom's, almost said Brown's, emergency order allowing for virtual meetings of cities throughout the state of California. So we will be doing public comment in two ways. You can either write us a letter, and so the letter is acceptable from any time, basically from the start of this meeting until the close of public comment for that item. If you write us a letter, we will read it out loud, and you can submit those to publiccomment@sonomacity.org. So if you're a little speaking shy, you can use that method. If not, you may also call in. So you can join in our Zoom, which is available on the city's website. Go ahead and join in our Zoom chat, and if you're in the chat, raise your hand, but don't do it physically, do it virtually. We'll catch that hand raising. We'll bring you into the meeting and allow you to speak with us. Both of them are gonna work in the same fashion the public happened, public comment happens in a live session. You'll get three minutes to public comment. So I apologize if I interrupt you to give you the minute time and the 30 second time. Not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to let you know that your time is running short. And it's also true of if you're reading, if you've sent a written public comment, we'll only allow three minutes worth of reading. So Latani is a fairly fast reader. So if you, if you keep something relatively short or reasonably short, we'll, we'll get a lot of comment in through that. If you are calling in from the phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine, and that'll indicate to us that you've raised your hand, because not everybody is, you know, on the computer these days. So, great, covered that. The other piece is that because we're acting virtually, there's a couple additional items to talk about, and that's Zoom bombing, new term for us this year. If we get Zoom bombed, and somebody hacks into our meeting, kind of takes it over, we'll go ahead and shut that meeting down, and, and try to bring it back and remove the individual who's been Zoom bombing us. If we do shut down, no further actions will be taken, and we'll try to jump right back in the meeting where we left off. If we're not able to restart the meeting, the meeting will be considered closed, and no action will be taken. And we'll have to restart these items at a later date. So that about covers everything. If we get a roll call, or actually, let's do the pledge of allegiance. We could do the pledge of allegiance right now, and we'll get started with the meeting. We have a virtual flag to bring up. Here it comes. There's a dog or a door going up there. All right, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Until it stands, that was missed there. I caught it. Great. So we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Hunley.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Present.
Councilman, Councilperson Agamonte.
Here.
And Mayor Harvey.
Here. All right, great. We did the, the report on closed session. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Show move.
Ooh, three councilmembers up for the second. We'll give it to David Cook with the second, and let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte.
Aye.
Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
A great agenda to vote on. Wonderful. So we're gonna go on. Comments from the public at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended you keep your comments to three minutes or less under state law unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph and Brown Act. The merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For public, for items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time that item comes up for council consideration. A product being acknowledged by the mayor, that's me, please begin by stating and spelling your name. Thank you. And we have, we've got two here. We've got Lynn Marie de Vincent and Steve Aker, Martin Wheel as well. Looks like Lynn Marie is up first. Lynn, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
I'll get my timer started. We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. I hear an echo. Hello, Mayor, council and staff. And I wanted first to thank you for persevering through all the difficulties our community is struggling with. You know, the public often says, we elected you and you work for us. And it's true. You do work really hard for us. And if I was really your boss, I would give you all a big bonus. Because you are our first class responders. I too, work for basically no pay for the community, and consequently can feel overworked and underpaid. Two years ago, I didn't know what one G was from another, but tonight I want to use these precious minutes when I can address you all at once to tell you this. The packet you've received from Mark Matholer and I is a miracle. I hope you've gotten it and had a chance to look at it. Our attorney, Andrew Capanelli, is like Moses. He took the vast ocean of obfuscation, the spun verbiage from Verizon, and parted the seeds. So we can calmly walk through the tunnel to the light at the other end. Just take a couple pages at a time, and you will discover that Verizon has been overly complicating the cell tower project. I know we've told you that we thought our appeal was a symbolic gesture of protest from our community who opposed these towers, and that was true then, before the pandemic hit, before Zoom enabled us to have access to each other in unprecedented ways. Mark and I heard Andrew on a three hour Zoom session with five other tech attorneys and realized that contrary to what Verizon had told us, there are valid legal reasons to deny the permits that do not prohibit them or put the city at risk to the degree Verizon threatened. We live here. We get to decide which leaf blowers, which size buildings, which cannabis dispensary is best for the community, and how much cell service is best for the community. It's simpler than Verizon wants us to believe. So whether it's because of loss of property value, no significant gap in coverage, or lack of common aesthetics, you, the city council, do have the power to say, no, thank you. We appreciate Verizon's efforts, that their product is unnecessary, degrading to our property values, and out of place in our beautiful town. Thank you again for all you do.
You, Lynn Marie. Thank you. Next, we got Fire Chief Stephen Aker. Steve, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Can you hear me okay?
Just fine, loud and clear.
Perfect. Thank you. So Mayor, council members, staff, and community. I wanted to take a moment today, and I want to first say thank you to Councilmember Agamonte for the prompt over the weekend to speak to everyone today. I know we've, we've been continually faced as a community with a lot of different challenges. The most recent has been a big one in a lot of different ways, and I know that's kind of an understatement, but with our COVID situation, and just as we appear to be getting out of that, unfortunately, I have to, I have to share as part of my responsibility to Fire Chief, the fact that we are now right in the middle of fire season again, just as we're coming out of COVID. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to remind everyone to keep their guard up about fire season, make sure that we are all doing our part to cut down dry weeds, dead grasses, and to manage dead fuels on our properties. Just over the weekend, we had two 100 acre fires just southwest of the Sonoma Valley here, wind driven. And we also had two more vegetation fires today within the valley. So fire season is definitely here. I want to encourage everyone to get out and cut those dead weeds and grasses in the mornings, before noon, and definitely not on high wind days. Your fire department, the Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue, it has started its weed abatement program again. It's annual program, and complaints for properties of concern can be reported to our department in a couple of different ways. The first and the easiest way is to go to svfra.org, and go to weed abatement and fill out an online reporting form. If there are any challenges with that, or people cannot do that, then please call our department at 996-2102. Again, 996-2102, and our staff will be able to help you through the process of a report. The last thing I want to, I want to mention, and this pertains to those who may be listening and participating in this meeting who don't happen to be City of Sonoma residents but live just outside of the city. We're in the process of starting up again our collaborative program on vegetation management. And the Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue Authority does this together with the County of Sonoma, and with our fire service partners, CAL FIRE. These inspections and this education program is designed to reduce vegetation in the wildland urban interface through education of property owners and inspections of a determined number of properties each season. These inspections will be starting the last week of June. So I encourage everyone in the unincorporated areas to keep on the lookout for a mail notice and other opportunities to participate in this program. And with that, I want to thank everyone for their time and their diligence in keeping our valley fire safe.
You so much, Chief. We appreciate you coming on and for all that you do for our valley. Really appreciate it. Next, we have Martin Wheel. Martin?
Good evening, Mayor Harvey and members of the council. I'm Martin Weil, W E I L. I'm in a Sonoma residence.
Apologize.
Well, fine, no problem. But I take it you can hear me. I, first of all, I'd like to just repeat, Lynn Marie Vincent's thanks to all of you. We don't, as, you know, members of the community, say thank you to the pervas volunteer missions. And I know it's a lot of work, and I think all of us appreciate it. If we don't say it all the time, please know that I think everybody in town appreciates your work. So I'm requesting that you, as a city council, undertake an official review of the use of force protocols by the Sonoma Police Department. I'm aware that our local force is governed by the county sheriff's department, and I don't know whether local practices modified separately from these. And I'll ask, also add that I don't have at this time any information as to whether there has been excessive use of force by the police department. But that said, I think all of us have been horrified at what we've seen routinely on TV these last weeks and months as regards the seemingly unnecessary, unnecessary violence against Americans, predominantly African Americans, by law enforcement across the country. The police nationwide, I think many of us would agree, have steadily become over militarized, and have adopted use of force policies that could be called excessive. Satan, as a citizen, deeply appreciates all of law enforcement, and am grateful to the men and the women in this job who often must put their lives on the line to protect all of us. But I think we can do better. Cities and towns across the United States are coming to that same understanding that force de-escalation leads to improved safety outcome for the public and for the police. I did see recently where Sheriff Essek and Chief Rodriguez posted on Facebook a response to a scorecard on local use of force protocols published by the advocacy group Eight Camps Wait. And I'm grateful that they took the time to clarify some of the matters in that report. I took the time to review the policies referred to in the Sonoma Sheriff's Protocol Manual, and I was disturbed to see the chokeholds, specifically short duration carotid holds are still permitted. Though I'm not versed enough in policing to claim that Campaign Zero, the name of Eight Camps Wait's recommendations, is the model for this council and this city, but they seem to me to be a good place to start. I'd like you to do that. Benjamin Franklin said, "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martin. And I would note that the sheriff put out a statement today banning carotid holds from the, from the use of force policy throughout Sonoma County as well. So, yep, that's a, it's a great move and a, and a good move in the right direction and proof positive that protests are working and do work. So I appreciate that effort, and let's continue on. And there are more changes and more to do, and can't respond too much to this because it's open public comment, but appreciate the, I appreciate the comment. Thank you. Great, we're moving on to the consent. Any other, anybody else for public comment? Do we have written public comment, Latani?
No, Mayor Harvey, no email public comments at this time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so we're moving on to consent calendar. Item, so, yeah, we're on our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are continued to be reelected and be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may change the order of the agenda. Anybody wishing to pull an item off of consent calendar? Any members of public wishing to push, pull an item of consent calendar? I guess we've got to move to public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have any questions of staff from council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open public comment. Seeing no one rise for public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. I do have a motion to approve the consent calendar here.
Motion to approve this consent calendar.
Nicely done. Seconded by Madalena Agamonte. Let's go ahead with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte.
Aye.
Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
And mine wasn't I, my thing I stuck.
Great, thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Unanimous vote for the consent calendar. That never happens. All right, moving on to regular calendar, city council, item 6.1, discuss, consider, and possibly take action to, one, select commercial cannabis retailers for storefront, for retail storefront and retail non-storefront businesses to move forward to phase two, site review and final vendor selection process, and two, direct staff to prepare amendments to the cannabis business regulatory ordinance. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, members of council and community. Let me just kind of give a brief overview, and then I'll hand to David Store, our planning director, to go into more detail. So as councils aware, we have been on a journey in the last six months or so to move forward with a cannabis dispensary for a retail, one retail and one non-storefront dispensary. And I just wanted to kind of review where we are in the process. So in January, council opened an RFP. There was, in March, there was initial paper ranking by HDL, our consultants. There was then a proposal review committee made up of city staff with HDL, but then also did rating of interviews. And then we came on May 27th to the council and brought you five finalists. Of those five finalists, one dropped out, Mercy Wellness. So you had four presentations on May 27th. We then waited for tonight in case we had any appeals from individuals who were not selected as the top five. We received no appeals. So now we are back with you for you to select the most qualified finalists. And what will occur, and there is not a magic number here, you have four finalists in front of you. The next step is to determine who do you want to move forward to what we call phase two, which is the site review, and then the final vendor selection process. So I will let David Store go through this in greater detail, but the next process would be for whichever candidates you move forward or applicants to then select an actual site. There would be a review of that site, and then it would come back to council for a final decision when you would award a conditional certificate to an applicant at a specific location. And then they have to go through the land use and potentially building permit process, depending on what site is chosen. So with just a few other quick things, there was a community benefit chart that, that staff put out on Friday. There have been some questions and concerns raised about that chart. I'll let David Store speak to that as well. And just as a reminder, again, the way this original process went with the request for proposal was when people, when the applicants turned in their paper process, the, the application basically said that there was no additional information that was to be added. During the presentations, there was some additional information or supplemental that was added by some of the individuals, some of the applicants. It is a council decision whether you want to consider that information or not, and Jeff Walter, our city attorney, can speak to you more about that. And there were also a couple of policy questions that the council had, policy or process questions the council had at the last meeting. And the, an answer to those questions were, was outlined in the staff report, but again, David Store will go through those. So with that kind of high level overview, I'll turn to David Store, and I will take this chart down. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ashley, could you leave that up just for a moment, please? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through that. And then I just want to also ensure that we have Matt Eaton from HDL on the line. I think he said in a text to me that he was online, but just want to make sure the audio is working for him, that he's been allowed to join as a participant. Matt, are you available? So Wendy, if we can, Matt Eaton is on the line. Wondering if you could allow him to be a participant, and I'm not sure what the word, the correct word is that allows him to participate as a speaker?
Yes, I'm looking. Oh, go ahead, Tanya.
I just promoted him to panelist. He raised his hand. That was awesome. I could see him.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Matt. So council members, we're of the opinion right now that we have almost 30 to 40 people that are part of the proposers tonight that have their teams ready and available to answer questions in, in greater detail than you were able to ask at the meeting on May 27th. As Kathy mentioned, we, we did present as part of the conclusion of phase one and two, we did provide the top five finalists, of which one, Mercy Wellness, withdrew their application. So we're now at the position of step three in that first phase, where you, as a council, select your top applicants to move on to phase two, which is a site review, where they will have 45 days in which to select a site, and also provide me with a zoning verification letter, which they've received from me, all within that same 45 days. And I'll, I'll talk about that in just a moment. When we last made our presentation, we were on May 27th, and there was one day left out of the 10 day appeal period. No appeals were received from candidate six through nine. We are now down to four very qualified proposers, and we're very fortunate as a community to have that option of flexibility. In our staff report, we did provide a community benefit chart that talks about employment, community contributions, and economic incentives. And today, I've been in contact with all of the proposers about that particular chart, and they will be providing supplementary, not new information, but supplementary information. Now, notwithstanding that, the council may ask additional questions above and beyond what has been provided in that chart relative to those categories that I just mentioned. So tonight, you can also ask about qualifications, experience, their business plan, security plan, safety, and again, labor and employment, which is somewhat tied into community benefits. So tonight, your council may choose all four of the proposers to proceed. A reduced number is not required at this point in order to stratify it to one retail, one storefront retail, and one retail non-storefront. That can come later in the process, the conditional certificate process, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. As I mentioned, the phase two on the chart that you see here, where it says June dash 45 days, the proposers will go throughout the community. And I know some of them have been knocking on doors already, but that will basically take, as if I've done my math correctly, to around July 23rd, where they would need to supply, supply me with the zoning verification letter to make sure that everything is tied in with respect to the buffers that your council discussed last summer, and other Title 19 zoning issues. Sometime in August, a brief presentation will be made to the city by the proposers that are left in the, in this phase two, with respect to site suitability, neighborhood compatibility, traffic congestion, public and patron parking, and other site safety issues. And at that point, or after that point, or even on that same night, your council can issue a conditional certificate or a CC, as we've laid, laid here on the chart, to want, to one proposer would like to do a, a non-storefront or a storefront, if you choose to do that, you also have the ability to do none of all. Once a proposer's been given a conditional certificate, they would then drop down to that second of the three blue tiers there that you see, where they would have a year to, to get occupancy, whether they're occupying a, an existing structure that needs to be converted through TIs, or from the ground up, which seems a little bit improbable, but there may be that property out there where that can occur. And so they would need to go through the planning commission process, get their building permits, and then have the inspections occur, again, all within that year. And they may request for additional time through that, throughout that process if there's a problem with that. A question that the city council asked on May 27th, related to, is it possible for the, for more than one retail storefront or non-retail storefront to allow to be moved forward, when they did not actually request that in the supplemental materials? As we've mentioned in the staff report, Coastal was the only one that checked both boxes. However, during the PRC interviews, other proposers did voice an interest, with the exception of Spark, and I'll, I'll let them address that tonight to ensure that I've got that correct. The, this can be done. More proposers can go to the retail storefront and non-storefront, but it would require an amendment to the city council, that the city council need to make in the municipal code. That can be done through two meetings of the council, and then we would wait a 30 day period in order for that ordinance to be effective, where we would actually change the code. On page three of the staff report, I do need to make a point there that we did have a concern with CEQA, having reviewed statute, has learned that the exemption would be available to us until summer of 2021. So it would not be a secret prohibition or a problem when it comes to extending, or extending the opportunity to have more storefront or non-storefronts, as the case may be. We did have two proponents that checked the box. Element seven did not make the top five, and so that's really a moot point. But again, Coastal did provide information in their application regarding non-retail, as well as the retail storefront. And it would be, stats determination that that would be unfair to those that filed the correct paperwork if we were to allow through some administrative process that's not in our ordinance to open that up. So again, sure. So is it, when we approve the retail storefront, my understanding was that anybody who had a retail storefront could also do delivery? If they didn't fill out the delivery piece of the application, are they able to do a retail storefront with delivery? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. I'll let Matt respond to that, but I do want to just say, that was actually the end of my presentation. So that was great timing. Matt, can you address? No, not at all. Matt, can you respond to that, please?
So retailers, by law, are allowed to deliver as long as local agencies allow it. And so you can have a storefront business with delivery. The non-storefront retail location obviously has delivery. However, it is prohibited from having customers on their site. They may not have a storefront business. So storefront businesses have storefront and delivery. Non-storefront may Non storefront may only do delivery with no customers on site.
At the moment, the only person who qualifies for the non storefront delivery is Coastal because they're the only individuals who apply to that.
Of those that are remaining, correct?
Great.
So as I said, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation. Jeff Walter and Matt and I are both, all three of us are available to answer questions if we can.
Do we have questions for council?
No, I'm glad that, that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for asking that question because I was wondering, I didn't see the same as you have just identified. For two, for one.
Thank you, Madeline. Rachel, did you have a question? I saw you turn your camera on, so I'm assuming yes.
I'm here. Yes, I do. So as far as, so I, my understanding is that the applicants can speak during public comment or as far as when or if we have questions for them, do we, how is that flow going to work?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the question. We, we've spoken with all of the proposers and let them know that tonight is the opportunity for the council to ask questions and it may come in any order. They're not making any formal presentations tonight, so if you would like to hear more about their business plan or community benefits, the council may ask anyone and we'll have them all available to answer questions as the council deems appropriate.
So then after public comment, we'll just all be in the room together and we can just, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna add them all into the room? We're not gonna kind of like add people in and out?
I'll have to defer to Wendy on the technicality of that. It's a little complex. Wendy, you know, we can do that.
We could do it a couple of ways. We could bring in one group at a time or we could have everyone who's an applicant raise their hand and we could add them all in.
It seems, I mean, I think there's two ways to do this because either we're gonna, we're gonna maybe go, you know, maybe we'll ask Coastal a question and then wanna ask something of somebody else and there may be this kind of need to bring people in and out. So I think either we bring them all in or we have representatives where we'll ask the question and the individuals who are gonna answer that question could raise their hand or comment in the chat that they'll take it and we'll bring that single individual. It doesn't make sense for me to bring a whole team in because it's like, some of these are like ten people and then bring them back out. I just think it'll be really complex for you. What's the pleasure of council?
Well, I definitely have the same questions that I want to ask each of them, so it would just be whether we go through each one by one, but I feel like it'll probably be more fluid.
I think ideally we would bring in one representative from each group and we would ask them to select who is the speaker for their group, so just, you know, but that seems practical to me, so they get one speaker and that person is brought in now and then if they have questions, they could all respond and probably we all have the same approach, similar approach, which is like asking the same questions of everybody. So we can get a, give everyone a fair opportunity to.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. My only concern with that is that there, you know, it seems like some of these groups are highly specialized. Or we have an individual who's really strong in the legal piece, somebody who's really strong in the community benefit fees. And so I want them to have the ability to put their best foot forward. So maybe if we ask structured questions, I don't know if we could categorize them and say, we're gonna ask community benefit questions now. And we could bring in those individuals who identify themselves. Now we can ask regulatory or security. Would that make sense or do we think that that's too cumbersome?
I guess what about just a, one group as then we did on the, when was that? The eighth or May twenty-seventh? If we have questions. I have three iPads in front of me, one with the twenty-seventh agenda, because I don't have copies of that. I have tonight's meeting and then the Zoom. So I, I would like this to be as least complicated as possible. I'm open to whatever anybody suggests.
Sounds like it's already complicated over there.
I guess council, if you all have standard questions for the most part that you, that you want to ask people, which is kind of what I'm hearing from a couple of you, then it may, makes sense to kind of bring a group in, bring an applicant team in, ask their questions, have them exit. Again, not knowing the preference of the council, part of it was really trying to understand of, you know, how much additional information you wanted, is it consistent, is the same? So if it's gonna be consistent questions you're gonna ask across, then we could bring the teams in.
Let's do this. Let's bring in the teams individually for, for kind of council questions because if we've got a list to run through and then we'll do one additional section for follow-up questions where each team will identify one person if there's a need for that. If we feel like we have a need for a follow-up questions, that we can bring in one individual from each team and then they can be kind of the generalists to answer those questions. Does that make sense? Do people agree with that?
Yeah, that's. So I have a question before we get started and maybe it's under one of the applications. It's from HDL, I guess. I just wanted to ask something, but maybe I'll ask the applicant.
You gonna keep us in suspense, Madeline? That's not fair.
That's a point of concern. It really doesn't have anything to do with the applicant. It's a judgment that was made, so I don't know.
Do you want to ask it right now since we're in the question period for staff?
Yeah, Coastal, it says point of concern, the applicant selected adult and medical use for both retail storefront and non storefront categories on the application form. Is that bad? Is that a smarty pants thing? What is that?
That, that was not part of the point deduction. That was in a section that gave a overview of the application and it was communication between HDL and you, the client or the city, and it was to prepare the, for the interview. So it looks like it was a typo or inadvertently added and it was a mistake. It was just something that we brought to the attention, but was not a point of deduction for the application review.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your answering that because I didn't understand it. Thank you.
So Mayor Harvey, so I'm just looking to David Store. Last time we went in one order, should we go reverse order? Or what's a, you know, pleasure of council?
I'm, could I ask where we go in the same order if you don't mind? As I said, I have three iPads here and I'm starting at the beginning where we, the presentation was nayed initially.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I can certainly adjust.
I do not mind, Madeline. Let's do it. Let's do it. That, that order seems as good as any. So it makes it easier for Madeline. Let's do it that way.
Thank you.
All right. So do we go to public comment now or are we doing questions first? I see Jeff shaking his head and then rolling his eyes. So I'm not sure what that means.
I think you should ask about the questions, public questions, questions of the applicants now.
Okay, great. So let's, let's bring in, who's our first group?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to give you the order that we did it in the last time, it was alphabetical. We did Coastal, Justice, Lighthouse and then Spark.
All right. And let's just have a standardized order for how this is gonna go. We'll, we'll go Madeline, Amy, David, Rachel, me, if that works?
Yeah.
We'll do vice mayor last. Okay. Cool. Sounds good.
I'm ready.
And let's double check to make sure if I'm gonna find an incumbent on the teams here, the applicants, to tell us whether or not they've got their whole team there. So please review, look at your screen. Is everybody with you? Do you have everybody that you need? Let us know when you're ready to go. I'm seeing a yes from Devin. Awesome.
We're still in on one more on our team.
All right. Can you identify? We got Julian. Okay, good. They're raising their hands. So perfect. We've got this down. It's like we've done it before. Got John L. again, raising their hand. Is that a member of your team or somebody's trying to sneak in?
That's a sneak, a sneaker.
Okay, all right. We'll wait for public comment for you, sir, and we'll go ahead with, we're starting with Madeline Agarante for questions for Coastal. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. I'm under business plan, Devin. It says here included a pro forma for at least three years of operation. I personally like that idea that you were able to have, you know, the money that's available and you've projected that. Can you give me a little outline of what you believe is the reason for that?
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna kick it over to Julian. Thank you, Councilwoman. We really appreciate it. Thanks for having us today. Julian, if you want to take the lead on a overview of financials.
Yeah. So was your question digging into the financials or were you asking why we did it that way?
No, I, I actually think it's a positive for you to be able to tell me that, you know, what you have as you projected, the funds that need, needed to be necessary. So I think that why, one million five hundred ninety-one thousand? And is that with the three, is that three years? Is that what we were talking about earlier or is that just a number?
The capitalization that we have is nine hundred thousand and it's really, you know, we did the best we could to come up with that number and we've actually found a piece of real estate that, that'll fit right within that, but depending on the tenant improvements and all that, without the, the ability to have property on the front end, we, you know, we did the best we could, but we have now locked down a piece of real estate, which we're really excited to share with you when the time comes and, and nine hundred thousand is more than enough for us to build that out. Built out seven locations thus far or seven different operations thus far, and so we're pretty good at projecting that within, within a reasonable amount of money.
That's great. Thank you. So I just wanted one, whomever can answer this, the state's mandated, mandated track and trace system? I'm sorry, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I can explain that to you. So the system is called metric and it's a seed to sale system. So it's how you track the cannabis plant all the way from when it has roots all the way through to when you sell it to the end customer. It's a way to, to regulate the, the, the process all the way from the grower to the manufacturer, to the distributor and then to us as the retailer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's see. I was looking at security. That seemed to be okay and I think I saw confirmed. You know, the confirmed, it says here a labor and employment plan, confirming hiring ninety percent of employees. I know that was something that the council was interested in. So I think that's, you know, really important to me. And I think I noticed an application showed to, failed to show approval owners, managers have been residents of the city of Sonoma. I'm sorry, you're a victim of that. They didn't like it when I got elected. I didn't live here. I, I've only lived here twenty-six years. It'll never be long enough, so I'm sorry you've been victim to that as well. The only one I saw that did a great job on that was Vice Mayor Hundley. And she, she was amazing. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Let me know if there's any other questions we can answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. We're on to Amy Harrington.
Hi, I was just wondering from the approval of the, once you get the, if you, if you were to get the approval, what is the estimated time period until a storefront would open?
So that is a great question. So we chose our property based on that and we had several locations that we had worked with the landlords in coming up to an agreement. And the property we chose, we believe we can get the construction done and store operational under six months.
Okay, and then my, I guess I have a question for staff. So we haven't really talked separately about the, or at length about the delivery only. Are we gonna talk about that at a later time or are we doing all that now since Coastal is the only applicant or what?
This would be the time to ask questions about that.
So I don't think we really got any kind of, or maybe I just don't remember, that we had like a, much of a presentation about the delivery side of it? And could you just talk about that for what your vision would, if you were delivery only, what would your vision be about that?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll dive into that. So from a financial perspective, we would not move forward with a delivery only permit. So the only way that it makes financial sense in cannabis is, and we have, we had a only delivery permit and it just doesn't make financial sense because of the labor revenue per hour. It just doesn't, you, you can't get the bottom line to, to, to make it work. So we, when we do apply, much like other cities, we apply that in our retail, we have a shared inventory to do both retail and delivery. And that really allows us to be able to make the numbers work. And the interesting times that we've had in the past, our delivery was about fifteen to twenty percent of our business during COVID and now I feel really propelling forward that it's gonna be between thirty and thirty-five percent of our business. So in all of our locations, our delivery has gone up over two hundred and fifty percent. So it's really, really important to us when we do look for new locations that we partner with the cities and that we do, that we always go for both retail storefront and non storefront. So and, and now with COVID more than ever, it's very, very important for the consumers and the city and the taxes and everything else to make sure that, that those two things are in conjunction and work together.
Okay, so then just to clarify for staff then, with this statement, does that mean we have no applicants who want delivery only?
Yes, that would appear to be the case.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I can conclude your questions?
It does.
Awesome. Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I guess I only have one question. Once you're up and going, let's say you're selected, how many visits per day would make it where it starts becoming profitable?
It's a very good question. So we scale up our labor based on a percentage of revenue. So we always have that metric in mind when we are scaling up labor, which is with two eighty E, the biggest concern in the cannabis industry right now is to make sure that you're able to, to deal with those metrics and really make sure that, that you're, you're honing in and paying attention to it. We believe that our per unit transaction will be about fifty-five dollars a day and we will start somewhere around seventy-five to a hundred orders a day in the first few months, ramping up to about two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred orders a day. And by the year two, it's usually about a twelve month run rate to, eight to twelve month run rate where you're cash positive. So in order for us to be cash positive, we just modeled out our location. We need to be about three hundred orders a day to be cash flow positive with the rent rates, TI and everything that we put into that location.
Thank you.
And we feel that, I feel that we can get there within a, somewhere between six and twelve months to answer the question a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. On to Vice Mayor Rachel Hunt.
Thank you, Logan. So my first question is for your business. So when did, what year did your first dispensary open?
First dispensary, so in the group, we have thirty-five open dispensaries across the country, but our first one in California, Santa Barbara was very progressive on, on their ordinance and getting it and, and pushing it forward, but it did take a long time to get through the processes you're seeing here today. It's, it doesn't happen overnight. It's a lot of decisions and going through and making sure everybody's comfortable. So our first one in California opened last year in Sep- September and we had won the license, you know, the year before that, but the building permit process in Santa Barbara took nearly a year.
Okay. And so I think you already answered my second question. How many open locations do you have? Is that thirty-five?
On our team, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. And how many applications do you have pending right now for additional locations?
Five, including Sonoma. Just clarify that.
Thanks.
I appreciate the clarification. And so my next question is to the local representative on the team, Mr. Gil Stat. What will your job be in the operations of this business?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good to see everybody. Thanks for bringing us back in. So as managing partner, my job is really to oversee the operation, not from a technical perspective, not from a day-to-day operations perspective, because really that's why I partnered with Coastal. These guys are, are the best in the business in my opinion, and so they run the day-to-day operations. My job is to ensure that the business is operating in a way that I would like to see it operating and that our commitment to the community stays where we need it to be. So I think of me as a board member, sort of chairman of the board of Coastal Sonoma, not as the CEO or president or day-to-day manager, because that's not an expertise I have. I think Councilwoman Harrington brought that up in the initial meeting that I don't have direct cannabis operational experience. So it's really. it's really important to me that Coastal as expert operators operate and ensure that we're fully compliant and that we do everything that's required and that I ensure that we're making sound business decisions, working closely with Julian and the team in front of you to continue to follow our commitments to the broader community. And um, as you all have seen now, my commitment to this community is is huge and our commitment as an organization. I really want to see that come to fruition.
Thank you.
Jump in, if that's okay. One other thing that I'm really excited about. So hi, everybody. Um, so one of the things that I'm really excited for Jordan to work with us on is our ninety percent hiring commitment. As you guys know, I think that's a substantial commitment and it really does take us the resources of on-the-ground people that know the community well and have had success in in hiring locally. Um, we are going to work with local partners like La Luz, um, like SOS to ensure that we're really getting the message out there to a wide variety of folks. But I do think that Jordan's role and knowing the community really well will be critical to our success in that ninety percent threshold. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Thank you. Um, so who who would, who will be the day-to-day manager or how is that person found?
So day-to-day, we'll have one uh, GM to start and then we have assistant manager. So as far as like the organizational structure, that's how it'll be laid out. We have a uh, head of operations that will come and get the store operating. We'll make sure that um, that we hire the the individuals that that are best for the business as well as uh, go through the training and all of our um, standard operating procedures to make sure that it is run, uh, as Jordan said, uh, compliantly and successfully and everything else. So that the individual is Ryan Bashar up front that that will get it up and running for us. Uh, and and he's been doing this for twelve years in in medical and recreational cannabis.
Thank you. And my last question is just for you guys. You said one million dollars in five years. So what does that look like?
Thank you for asking that.
Yeah.
And and I think, yeah, go ahead, Julian. I was
Well, I was gonna give it over to you, buddy.
So, you know, one of the things that was really fun for me in this process was sitting down with Julian and with Devin and the team and saying, hey, you know, my family's been intimately involved in philanthropy in Sonoma Valley for fifteen years. Um, I'm sure many of you know this. My dad served on the board of Hannah. He's on the board of the Ed Foundation. My mom was on the board of uh, the museum and was instrumental in getting the uh, health center to its current location. You know, this community means a lot to my family and so I really pushed the Coastal team to make this community benefit a top priority. And then I went and I looked at, you know, the four areas I think are really impactful for us as a community right now. Obviously, our advisory council can help steer if we were misaligned on one of those. But I think when we look at things like early childhood education, especially in light of what COVID has done to our educational, public educational system, education more broadly right now. When we look at homelessness and the impact of homelessness in Sonoma County at this point in time, you know, these are major issues and we're a small community. And I think that by putting resources at play quickly as we get open, we can really make an impact in the community and you know, we're trying to do this already and many of you know, I mean, I've been really involved in donating meals to SOS and and we're doing a lot right now and I just, I just think we can do a lot of good and I'm really, really excited about it and I'm excited to continue what I've started, what my family's been doing and just be a partner in the community.
Be um, uh, so is it going to be just like straight cash each year in kind? Is this including um, tax revenue? Like the breakdown of it, is it?
So this, this, this is a cash gift, um, the cash spend into the community. This is not uh, in-kind donations. This is, this is us getting actively involved in making a difference in grants and other things that can be used to for programmatic implementation. So we want to ensure that the programs that uh, people are able to do can be tied back to the funds and we know that all of us can two years from now see the impact that Coastal is making in the community directly through the funds that we're putting into play with these various non-profits.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Can I ask a clarification about one of your questions? Um, when I looked at your website, it, I I wasn't sure how you answered Councilmember Huntley's question because you said thirty-five on your team, but I was under the pressure for some reason that you only had one storefront that was opened in twenty nineteen. So could you just clarify for me, what do you have already?
So Coastal as a brand has uh, seven operational uh, licenses. We have distribution and manufacturing. We have a home delivery in Santa Barbara. We have San Luis Obispo. Uh, we have Lompoc, we have our Santa Barbara store. We have two additional stores that will be uh, in our portfolio within forty-five days that are operational, one in uh, Seaside, one in Vallejo. And then when I say thirty-five, that's on our team. So Coastal is our California brand. But we have uh, on our team, we have the founder of Native Roots. Uh, Josh Ginsburg is a founding partner of the company. Native Roots has twenty-two dispensaries. Uh, they're in North America and they're in um, uh, Canada. So we have, we brought all of that uh, intelligence on the team and that's how we started. So when Melante and I founded the company, we hired an attorney to uh, connect us with a, with the best cannabis entrepreneur we that she could find and she connected us with Josh. And so when we founded uh, when we founded Coastal, we knew we needed that cannabis experience. So two and a half years ago, we we partnered with Josh Ginsburg. And that's where the the thirty-five total stores in our company come, or not in our company, excuse me, on our team come from. But Coastal
I'm I'm sorry, I'm still confused. So Coastal, the corporation, has how many storefronts? Just that right now, how many do you have?
Retail locations, four.
There's four. Okay, where are those locations?
Locations. So we have San Luis Obispo, we have Lompoc, which both has both delivery and um, and retail. We have Santa Barbara delivery license that's in a different location. We have
Now, all all I'm curious about is where do you have storefronts that are currently open and when did they open?
That's what I'm explaining to you. So we
But just that, not delivery. I don't want any, sorry, straightforward thinker. I'm an attorney. So just the places that are currently open that are storefront.
Storefront, we have two locations currently open and two two locations that are coming into our company uh, in forty-five days that we have an escrow.
And where are the two locations that are currently open?
Lompoc and Santa Barbara.
Okay, and when did they open?
Uh, Santa Barbara opened in September and Lompoc opened in January, I believe.
Okay, so one is September twenty nineteen and one is January twenty twenty and those are the two that you currently have.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other follow-up questions from council? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and ask my questions now. Um, so uh, with regards to community benefits, what organizations do you currently have contact or contracts with or, you know, uh, have had discussions with and what specific services do you foresee offering? And if, you know, you may have kind of answered that question with uh, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Huntley's question. So you know, I think I may switch that second part to what have you done in other communities uh, as far as uh, community benefit offerings?
Devin, like to answer that or
Yeah, I might make note that Devin uh, dropped off the call, but she's raising her hand to the added back.
We add Devin back in, please.
Julian, do you want to, while we're waiting for Devin to come in?
She's in.
Oh, she's in. Great. Thanks.
So Devin, Devin, the the question was posed about the organizations we're working with in Sonoma as well as the organizations we've worked with historically.
Sure. Well, thank you guys so much and sorry about that. Um, so in Sonoma, similar program to what we do in Santa Barbara, we call it our Coastal Cares Program. Um, each employee participates in our Coastal Cares Program where they volunteer um, their time. We do about four hours per week um, at a specific nonprofit. We have two partners in Santa Barbara. One is PATHA, a homeless shelter, and one is Unity Shop, which is a local organization that serves underserved populations. Um, it's an awesome organization. They basically set up a grocery store and a clothing store where um, underserved populations are able to go in and at and shop just like they would normally, but they don't have to pay anything. Um, so we participate in volunteering with them as well as giving um, donations on a regular basis to date. We've donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to the um, California community throughout our different uh, different applications and proposals. Um, and in Sonoma, we're really excited. And again, I do really appreciate Jordan's work um, with helping me create our community benefits proposal. We worked really hard on it. Um, and I'm really proud of it. Um, and I think, I think that the four areas that we really hit on are really important to Sonoma, but also really important to Coastal. Um, our work around homelessness is a theme that we do um, across the board and something that we're really dedicated to. Um, so in addition to our general Coastal Cares Programs where we work with a few pre-selected nonprofits on a regular basis, providing donations as well as volunteer hours, um, we also do things on a, on a regular basis just to support the community. Like this weekend, we supported um, our community's paddle out in Santa Barbara um, regarding Black Lives Matters. Um, additionally, we did over four thousand masks giving out to the community broadly in Santa Barbara during COVID. Um, as well as all to any customers that came in in our doors. Um, these are just some examples of things that we do when we, you know, react to what's going on in the community as well as the proactive engagement that we do through our Coastal Cares um, program. So we're very excited. Um, I met with La Luz this afternoon. Um, just to to kind of further our relationships and I'm very excited about the potential impacts that we can have there. Um, I've really enjoyed working with the nonprofit community. I've been, you know, Kathy King has been wonderful. Um, and I just, I'm very excited. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Let me, let me jump in there, Mayor Arby, if you don't mind, and give you some specifics on each of those programs if that's what you were asking as well. So let's start with early childhood education. Um, we sat down with the Ed Foundation and really looked at how and what the costs were to fund a preschool class. One of the big challenges is uh, preschool, uh, free preschool or or pre-K is something that we looked at. So we actually allocated an amount of funds to fund a pre-K class. And so you'll see in our application that one of the grants that we discussed was actually funding a pre-K class of eight students as part of that ongoing commitment. So we we went and we looked at, again, I think uh, to to the Vice Mayor's question. We want to make sure that the funds are used to specific programs that we can all point to and see that impact directly. So that's a good example of working directly with the Ed Foundation to determine a program that fit within the budget we could allocate them that would have a direct and meaningful impact on people here in the valley. So that's one with uh, with education. Sorry, was the question? No, okay.
Here's to be some bumping in the background.
No, I'll um, the second was homelessness. Uh, obviously with what's happening, there's a lot of dynamic things at play as we're all intimately aware. We have um, the homeless camp uh, in Northern Sonoma Valley uh, that was set up. Um, we also have uh, SOS in Haven here in town and trying to think about how we can help the homeless population most effectively here. I think there's been a lot happening with COVID and we haven't gotten clarity from Kathy and the team on what the best program coming out of this, you know, six months from now will be. So that's a continuous dialogue and obviously it's on our advisory council, which will allow us to uh, be dynamic. One was food security. Um, Mr. Mayor, I know that's a uh, a big party of yours and you've been talking a lot about it during uh, this challenging period that we've all been going through. And I actually, uh, I heard about a program like this, uh, not in our community, which was providing, it's actually, I I learned about Napa through um, Olay. And they have this amazing test kitchen. Yeah, I I I don't know if anyone on council has been to Olay's signature or their new uh, facility down in in Southern Napa, but in that they actually have a kitchen where they take low-income families and they bring them in and show them how to cook with fresh produce. And one of the big challenges is both affording and knowing where to purchase fresh produce, but also then how do you cook those meals with those fresh produce items. So in talking to Sal Chavez and Ari, we talked about the importance of providing people good produce to eat and then teaching them how to cook it. So we're working on a program and obviously the beautiful thing is our three locations are staggered throughout the valley. So we've been discussing a program where we would purchase produce from local uh, purveyors. And then we would give those to low-income families. Think about like a CSA box. But it would be coupled with cooking demonstrations, educational things to teach people how to actually then take this food and make their families healthy meals as opposed to buying inexpensive prepackaged foods or fast foods and trying to teach them ways to do it that would improve their overall family health, reduce sodium. Uh, you know, things that are are major health problems, sugar and sodium being the two biggest ones. So I, Olay's had huge success with that program. I think if we could introduce a program like that here in Sonoma Valley, I think it would have a really material impact. And then the last one was obviously wildfire. While I don't think what we're going to be able to contribute will necessarily materially change Sonoma Valley's ability to respond to the potential of of devastating wildfires. We want to be really thoughtful in our contributions there. We've been in contact with fire chief and fire department to understand where and how these funds can best be deployed to benefit the community. So those are the four primary areas and the direct kind of communications we're having and what we're thinking as far as community impact. I hope that answers your question. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm mute.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Jeff, uh, City Attorney, I I have a question for you. Um, I'd like to ask a question not about a specific location, but the approach to choosing a location. Is that appropriate?
I think so.
Okay, great. Um, so uh, when considering a a location, uh, what is your approach? What kind of concerns are you thinking about? And um, and what, you know, what goes into the thought process behind choosing a final location?
I'll take that. So when choosing a location, we always look at parking. Uh, we look at the condition, the current condition of the building such as ADA access and all of the the things that you need to go through the building permit process and making sure, and then we uh, we analyze that location based on what it's going to cost us and make sure that it's uh, viable for the long term, that we're able to sustain there. The last thing um, your community wants is to have a dispensary open and not be able to keep its doors open. And we're seeing a lot of dispensaries starting to go out of business in different locations um, where there's high density of, you know, of uh, either a low, a small population or a high density of dispensaries. And so um, we do, we're, we're pretty analytical when it comes to choosing a location.
Can I jump in and add to Julian's comment? Um, we've been talking about it a lot and it was uh, fun. And actually Julian, Melante and the team came up and I kind of gave them a tour of Sonoma and we were going through the pros and cons of all the different areas and um, you know, it's Mexican food and and got to spend some time together and um, what's really important too is that we pick a location that I believe can be open quickly. Uh, Julian um, talked about it earlier, but you know, there's two key things. One, I think this community is ready to have a safe and and good dispensary in town. Uh, it's a long travel to any of the dispensaries in our area. And two, um, I think bringing that tax revenue in quickly and helping this community through a time where our tourism has declined significantly uh, is really important as well. So we've been really thoughtful and to be honest, I don't know if it's appropriate. I'll ask and and Jeff, you can say whether it is or isn't. Um, any thoughts from council on their priorities is also welcome. And since we are the first and everyone will get the opportunity to go after us, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to ask a question back, but I I will surface the question and let Jeff tell me whether it's appropriate or not.
I I think it gets problematic because the council members might not be able to remember those criteria from applicant to applicant. I would prefer that that we uh, stick to the council members asking the questions at this time.
Totally understood.
My final question is this one. Um, I apologize for taking so many questions. Um, how do you typically advertise your locations and uh, your products? Uh, do you use local newspapers? What do these ads look like? Um, and what do we expect to see in the city of Sonoma in things like the Sun, the IT or on Facebook if Coastal needs that?
So for marketing and advertising, uh, there's a few key uh, uh, sites that people do go to such as Weed Maps, um, Google SEOs, those sorts of things that we obviously focus heavily on. Um, but we really do focus on community partnerships. So one thing that 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 always makes us stand out is we we do all of the events that we can possibly do. We sponsor every single thing we can in the community, make sure that our name is out there. Obviously, we take into consideration if making sure that the event has a majority of people that are twenty-one and over and those sorts of things, but uh, just really doing uh, as much as we can in the community and that really drives traffic to our store. Uh, I would say that with all local uh, newspapers and radio ads, uh, we wrap cars in Coastal. I mean, you, we do all sorts of unique things. We partner with uh, local restaurants. Bring in a receipt, you get, you know, ten percent off. We we do all sorts of uh, marketing campaigns uh, to drive traffic into the store and make sure that that the community knows that that we're there.
Okay, thank you very much.
If if I'm, if I may, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Cameron, you're a bit of a general counsel for the company. One thing I want to add on is that the advertising rules within cannabis are very strict. And so one of the things that we're very cognizant of is that we follow those rules and those laws. So what you're not going to see is you're not going to see Coastal plastering its name all over the city. So what you're not going to see is you're not going to see coastal plastering its name all over the city about there being a cannabis dispensary that's open. What you will see is a very specific thought out process in ensuring that the market of people that do see any sort of advertisement, and I use air quotes because we have to be very careful, is truly of the age that is legally allowed to participate in that practice. So we're very cognizant of that.
Thank you. David, sorry, I understand you have a question as well.
I have a question too, based on your questions, Logan.
Oh, question on questions. I'm going to allow the council member to go first and then we'll get to staff.
Okay. Well, I'm in my kitchen, so it's a little bit loud. Sorry. But, um, what, um, here's my question for Jeff Walter. What happens if there's a promised community benefit and then that is not provided? So if they say, I'm going to give a million dollars and then they don't have the revenues that support that, how is that enforced?
Our regulations and the original ordinance that the council adopted was based on a set of provisions that contemplate the community benefit being memorialized in an agreement as well as being memorialized in conditions of approval. So when this council sometime in August finally makes a decision, awards one conditional certificate to one storefront operator, there will be attached to that award, the conditions that the council wishes to see implemented. And the community benefit component will be a very important one to include and make sure that the promises and the aspirations and hopes and plans that are articulated in a community benefit proposal are transformed into obligations.
So just so I can understand, it kind of makes sense if you say a percent of revenue, but if you just say a set dollar amount, which is less than the current capital on hand, how would you enforce it if it did not happen?
If, if a community benefit includes, for example, contributing 4% of gross revenues.
A different one, if the community benefit says, I will give a million dollars, period, how do you enforce that?
The conditions of approval and the, and the contract that accompanies those conditions would set forth a implementation and reporting and auditing component, entiling the city to conduct audits to see if in fact a million dollars was spent each year and how it was spent. And if they fail to consistently or at any time comply with that obligation, then the remedies, both contractual and otherwise, would be available to the city to terminate the agreement, terminate the operation, et cetera.
So can I have a question on a question?
Yeah, we're doing that now. We're like double stuff Oreos.
Tag team. So I wanted to ask, was that a million a year or a million over a period of time?
Million over five years is what they're proposing.
Okay. Cause it was like, I want in. That's a lot of money. Sorry, I expose myself all the time. Sorry.
All right.
If, if I may interject one more thing, one of the other, I don't want to call it marketing avenues, but one of the other things that's really important to me and, and our community knows this, there are a lot of events that are not-for-profit partners and communities throw. So we also set aside a fund to sponsor tables at those events. Those events are generally all over 21 because they generally involve the consumption of alcohol. And as we all know, if you're involved in this community, being seen, being involved, engaged with those various events is really important and it's a great way to hear feedback from the community, to engage directly with the community. So we also have a fund set aside for actually direct sponsorship participation in various not-for-profit events. So that the coastal team, not just, uh, you know, not just through the outside, but actually the coastal team is there for the community to meet and interact with and get to know us even better as people. And that's really important to me. I want there to be this comfort level that is created with our team and the broader community.
Thank you, Jordan. Um, let's go ahead, David, with your question.
Yeah, it's a comment and then the question to the council. When we were doing the project review, proposal commute, review committee questions, we were in the back end of April and clearly COVID was on our mind. And we certainly asked the question of each of the proposers about the effect of COVID because they prepared their pro formas prior to COVID. And so they were able to provide us with a response to that. I think it would be helpful for the council to hear that from each of the proposers. And then secondarily, should there be a second or a third retail storefront? If that would also have an effect on their pro formas. So if that's of interest to the council, I'd like to offer that question to you, to ask of each of the proposers they go through.
Good question.
See, it sounds like it is of interest to the council, so let's allow it through the gate.
So is it my turn to answer? So COVID had a very interesting effect on our, on our businesses. We saw, we saw a huge spike throughout the beginning, first few, first probably a few weeks of our businesses where people felt that they weren't going to be able to go out and, and, and purchase cannabis or, or any other thing for that matter. And then we saw a decline, probably about 15%, 20% in our stores. And at that same time, we had about a 250% increase in our revenue of delivery. So through COVID, we definitely saw an effect, but it kind of leveled out by the fact that we had a, a large spike in delivery versus the, the 15% decline in, in, in the retail store. So I think that might have answered it unless I missed something there, David.
I can jump in the second part, Julian, which is, David, it was a two-part question. The second part was the impact of two dispensaries versus one. In small communities, it will definitely impact both dispensaries' abilities to operate and operate profitability. And it would materially change the commitments we can make in our application. You're taking the same pie and cutting it in half, essentially. So I think from all of our perspective, we want to honor the council and the broader community's decision on which way they go. But certainly, you know, I think every pro forma application that was put in was based on one dispensary as that was what was understood at the time. So I would assume that everyone who is presenting today or answering questions would say essentially the same thing, which is it basically takes what everyone's projecting and cuts it in half. Julian, I don't know if you want to add to that, but that's, you know, the way we, we viewed it.
Yeah. So in other communities, what I've seen happen is they usually will introduce a number of dispensaries based on the population, which I'm sure with Matt, you, you guys went through that sort of analysis to come up with the one dispensary versus two, three, four, five dispensaries. And then what we see happen is once that dispenser gets up and operational, you see the tax revenue being generated. You understand the volume of people coming in because, you know, what you have right now is you have four very good operators and, and in essence, all of us are going to be within a couple percent of each other. Like the market's going to bear what the market, market's going to bear. So we all went out, we did our analysis, we did the best we could to come up with a pro forma and projections to be able to meet that, but all of us are going to be within a couple percent of each other. Cause you really have, you know, some good operators here standing in front of you. So what I think, what I've seen other cities do, which, which has seemed to work well is introduce a dispensary or in a, in a larger population, maybe two or three dispensaries, see how that works. And then from there, uh, you know, six months or a year later down the road, reopen up for another round of applications. And it seemed to work well and the cities get to know, uh, the cities get to understand and know the process and, and what a good actor is and what they do for the community. And, um, and are they, are they fulfilling their commitments? And all of those things are obviously very important to the community and then, and then go from there. So yeah, I would say that definitely if we opened up two dispensaries there, it would drastically change everything that we base our pro forma on.
Can I ask a question to Jeff?
You may.
And I'm just eating dinner. I apologize. It's, I have my camera off. But, um, uh, so Jeff, if we later allowed two dispensaries, but the original terms of approval included their economic projections, which were a dollar amount, not based on percent of revenue, would they be required to fulfill those? Or would the conditions of approval be changed if there was a second dispensary?
That would likely be a subject to negotiations. Uh, and if the, the agreement and the conditions of approval would likely need to be tailored to address, address that contingency. Otherwise, if the, if that doesn't happen and we have very clear unconditional commitments to spend $5 million over, I'm sorry, a million dollars over five years, then that's what they need to do, no matter what their revenues are and no matter how many other dispensaries might be permitted in the city.
Okay.
So if I may speak on that, I, I would note that I'm sure all the applicants in this process, you know, are the, the numbers that have been committed are based off of the, the idea that we were under the impression that one retail storefront dispensary would be awarded. So, you know, I'm just, to be discussed at a future point in time, if we're lucky enough to be a selected applicant, if others are lucky enough to be brought on at a secondary time. I think that I just want the council to understand that the projections of performers, I think probably across the board by all the dispensaries should have been done based off of the metrics that were provided by the ordinance. So just wanted to add that to the mix.
I don't know what the conclusion of that thought is.
Can I, can you clarify? Maybe I, maybe I might be able to clarify if you can.
So the broad thought was we made our proposal based on there only being one dispensary.
Correct.
And what is the rest of the thought? And what?
Uh, and so all of our financial projections were very well thought out and very well analyzed in terms of the ordinance that the city of Sonoma put forward, which was that one retail storefront dispensary would be awarded. And so we made a commitment based off of actual dollar amount as opposed to a, a percentage of revenues such that we could be very clear to the city about exactly what we had in, had every intention to do. So as has been noted, the one million over five years is, is quite a large commitment, but we're comfortable doing that. And that's one of the things that Jordan, when he came to us and asked us, you know, what are we willing to do? Impressed upon us that he felt was very important and was part of who coastal needed to be in the community. So to close out the thought, and I hope this answers your question, let me know if it doesn't, is that the million dollar commitment was based off of the one retail dispense, storefront dispensary that was going to be awarded by the city.
So the, so I would think of it as saying, if there are two, that is not your commitment.
I can't say that that's not our commitment at all. It really bears, uh, it would bear out in the marketplace to, to understand. What we want to do is we want to make sure we, that we remain operational and can continue to provide city tax revenue both to Sonoma as well as, you know, county and state taxes as well. So we want to make sure we're a good operator. We want to make sure we're a productive operator. So I certainly don't want to say that we can't commit that if additional dispensaries are open. I just want to be very forthright with you and let you know that our, that our numbers are based off of the idea that one retail storefront would be awarded per the Sonoma ordinance.
Yeah, I can jump into. So we, like you said, a lot of people do it based on a percentage of revenue. We bet on ourselves. So we did our numbers and we said, hey, we're going to bet on ourselves and this is a number that we can do. But we did that on the circumstances that were provided. So if you go and add 20 dispensaries in Sonoma, we cannot commit that same number because I'm not able to bet on myself, but I could go, if you do that and do a percentage of revenue, that's fine. But I wanted to make it very clear in this application that we're betting on ourselves and we will be able to do that with one dispensary in Sonoma. And we did it as a percentage of revenue, just on the backside of things and made it very clear to Sonoma City, to everybody what that number was, and we just use a, a flat number. So yes, it would definitely change as dispense, if you, if we add another dispensary, our revenue numbers would go down and therefore our commitment would go down.
But it couldn't go down if the condition of approval, it wouldn't be allowed to go down. Yeah.
With one dispensary, right?
With one.
If, there's no, if the condition of approval is you said you'd give us a million dollars, we don't have to negotiate to accept less, right, Jeff?
That's correct. And if they don't like the condition, then they don't have to open.
Well, and it's not a million over five years. So that's only 200,000.
No, I know, but I'm saying all the other applicants have said a percent of revenue, which I, I understand more easily because then whatever they make, we're getting a percent of revenue for those things. But if you make a specific dollar commitment, if there are another marijuana dispensary or things change in the economy, you know what percent of revenue you're getting. I'm just curious about the dollar amount, which sounds great for nonprofits, but I am concerned about the collectability of it and the enforceability of it and then the implied hamstring on a future council about whether or not, how many dispensaries they want to have. So I'm just curious, that's why I was asking the questions about whether or not it's enforceable or it's more of a promise.
So I can tell you, in Santa Barbara, we have Kenny Loggins as our Jordan. So we, we, Kenny Loggins is our, our charity ambassador here in, in Santa Barbara. And he allocates the, you know, helps us allocate the funds the same way. So we, I, we're here to do the best thing we can for the community and for everybody. Obviously, if a bunch of dispensaries come and you guys pull that covenant, we can't afford to do that, then we'll close our doors down, just like any other business would, would do. We feel very comfortable that we can provide that with the information that we had when we wrote the application. If that, I've never seen a city like halfway through, you know, add another dispensary or change the ordinance halfway through a merit-based application process. I've just never experienced it. So I just don't know that I have a very clear answer. But Amy, if it would make you feel better to have a percentage of revenue and that's something that you would like us to do, I'm happy to change our application to do that. We did our numbers in a pro forma that we felt comfortable putting forth, right? For you, for you and a very clear and easy understanding. Cause if I said 2% of net profits, that other people say you, net profits is, is a very hard thing to understand in a business. As I'm sure everybody on here is our business people, net profits doesn't necessarily mean, it's very hard, it's actually probably much harder for you to track what net profits are going through and doing audited financials and all the rest of that versus I'm saying, I'm going to write a check and it's a very clear, I either do it or don't. But if you're going to, most of the applicants, when you read through it, they're probably saying net profits. I'll give 5% of net profits, whatever they're saying. But how do you, how do you understand what net profits are without digging into the business and, and going for every, understanding every dollar? So I was trying to make it very, very easy for you to understand.
I appreciate that. I mean, I, my business revolves around looking at finances. That's what I do. So I'm, I understand what you're doing and I can appreciate it, but because I'm an attorney and because I've been on the city council for almost four years, I'm very aware of how unenforceable a lot of things are. So a million dollars sounds great, but I want to make sure that if you're selected, that, that comes to fruition. And I see the, although I see the benefits, I don't really need to ask questions about that because I understand them. But the pitfalls are what I want to have the answers to. So the questions are about the pitfalls because I don't have questions about the benefits because they were obvious.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Can we move on? I think.
I, I have a question.
All right.
One question, only because we've gone down this road. Yeah. So I'm putting together your pro forma and your application. You know, what, what consideration was given to the ballot initiative that is coming up in November? And also just the reality that, you know, we have a quick election year coming up and the majority of the council could easily change and the laws could change after that. So I, I heard a lot of talk about sort of the information, the application based on the information given, but these are just sort of realities of local government, plus we like actually have a ballot measure that's going to be on the ballot.
We, when putting this together, we did the best we could with the information we had at hand. And so I believe that in a community of your size, one dispensary is more than adequate. Uh, I think that it's, and I think that you're going to see that it's easier to look over one dispensary, audit one dispensary, work with one dispensary or one, one company, I should say. And so, um, I guess that if you're referring back, or if we're referring back to the, to the commitment of the million dollars, I guess is where we're going, that we, we did it based on the population size, believing that one dispensary would be adequate for the community, that we'd be able to serve the community well and that we would, and that with those, we can afford to spend a million dollars into the community.
I'm just asking about the consideration of contingencies that come with an ever-changing democratic structure like ours and specifically the ballot measure that is going to be on the ballot in November.
Correct. So the upcoming ballot measure would, my understanding, and if someone has better clarity, it would allow more businesses to open, correct? I mean, would, would change the landscape for cannabis retail operations.
Unlimited number of dispensaries.
Correct. Exactly. Um, so business concept, first mover advantage, which is really meaningful. One, the being first to the market and establishing our reputation, our name, making the kind of commitments we made, we believe is the right thing to do. And in two of my businesses, I've been first mover and there's something really meaningful to that. Secondly, um, you know, we, we, to Julian's point, are betting on ourselves. And that was why we put this application together the way we did. And that was why we put this application together the way we did. Um, Julie and I are both business people. Um, obviously Julian has much deeper history now in the cannabis space than I do, uh, which is why we partnered together. But we really looked at what we believe and what, where we've been successful in the past, where they've been successful, I believe we could be in this community. And to his point, we're willing to take the gamble. To be clear, as Cameron said, that gamble was based on one dispensary in the town of Sonoma so that we could have a great dispensary in this town. And, uh, someone that not only provided a great service to the customers, but also provided a great service to the broader community. So, yes, there's risk, but there's risk in any business venture. And I believe that we analyze that risk. Obviously, as you correctly said, the landscape is ever-evolving. But we'd like the opportunity to open and to show the community what we are and how we operate and, and what kind of product we're able to provide. And we believe that once we do, um, all those changes down the road, we can weather.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and thank Coastal for, uh, for joining us and, uh. Going through our question period, I appreciate it. And, uh, thank you very much for your time and energy to this project. And we will, uh, see you later. So we'll move on to the next group. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's our next group? I wanted to ask them if they'd have to change their name because we're pretty far from the ocean.
Next group is Justice Grown, Mayor Harvey.
Oh, so, oh, okay, they're out of order like the last time. Okay.
No, Valen, who's next?
But I want it to be Justice Owned. But I'm telling you, it's out of order last time and it's out of order this time.
Okay, so we're okay with Justice Grown? It's gonna work out for you?
I just went through it and I rolled them by.
All right. I don't want to complicate things over there for you, just three iPads, you know? Good. Want to keep this moving? Make it work. All right, and I'll leave it again to Justice Grown to let us know when everybody that they need is in the chat. And on the screen. And they've got matching Zoom backgrounds. Oh, except for one.
Okay, it looks like we are all here, Mayor Harvey.
We got everybody? All right, wonderful. So again, the order is, I believe it's Madeline, Amy, David, Rachel, me. So we'll go ahead and if David Stor is throwing out a question too, we can throw him in there. Uh, but, uh, let's go ahead and start with Madeline Aggermonte. Are you ready to go with questions?
Yeah, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Um, point of concern I have here, the ownership percentage. Identified on page five of the application form failed to identify and calculate the ownership percentage accurately. That seemed pretty interesting, although I don't know what how that, what that might mean.
Sure, I'd like to answer that question. Um, we provided a supplemental follow-up letter clarifying the financial ownership structure. Um, and I can speak to that now if you would like me to. Council member.
Yeah, thank you.
So Danielle Lowy holds sixteen percent, John Lowy holds thirty-four, Mike Cannavitz holds forty. Ken Brown owns five percent and Jewel Matheson owns five percent.
Okay. Thank you, um. I, at this point, I don't have any, I have some things that are highlighted. Let's see, um. Okay, uh, point of order, it is unclear if the applicant is proposing to conduct. Retail, this is in business plan, retail deliveries at, as part of their storefront operation. As I did not indicate so in the application. So, I mean, there's no need for you to run two businesses.
For clarification, we did not check the box for delivery and intended to apply for the retail license.
I, and yeah, I would, I assume that. Thank you, and, um. I think that's it for me. Thank you. I mean, there's a lot more, but I don't want to belabor this.
And to be clear, retail, just to, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but a retail, a successful retail application would allow them the right to run a delivery operation as well. Without checking that box. Um, okay, great. So we're on to council member Amy Harrington.
Thank you. Um, so in terms of building out your space, after you, if you were the successful applicant. What is the timeline from being approved through opening your doors in your, in your plan?
Uh, estimated timeline at this point would be November first. Um, that's pending, uh, one of the elements in the location that we're looking at. Um, but the earliest date would be November first and the latest date would be around November twentieth.
November first, twenty twenty.
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know. Um. I think that's all. Do I have any other questions? I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
You, on to council member David Cook.
Yeah, I guess I'll ask a question I asked before to Coastal. Um, once you're up and going, how many visits do you feel a day would make you profitable?
Sure, it looks like at our calculations in the third quarter, we're estimating to be profitable. So that would be about twenty customers per hour.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to Vice Mayor Rachel Hummer.
Hello, sorry, I, um. Died for a second, but I'm back. See, all right. So, um. So I'm talking about the business that will be, um, operating this, uh, location, but when did yours first dispensary open?
Um, Barry Wood opened his first dispensary in two thousand and seven, which was Peace and Medicine. Jewel Matheson opened her first dispensary in two thousand and four, which was Sonoma Patient Group. And prior to that, it was the caregiver, excuse me, caregiver compassion center. Uh, but the Sonoma Patient Group was the first dispensary to open up in Sonoma County. And one of the earliest dispensaries to open up in, in the nation, uh, in two thousand and four.
And how many locations are currently open?
We have one location that is in Bennett Valley, which is our cultivation center. We have a distribution, processing and manufacturing center in Santa Rosa. We have a retail location on Petaluma Hill in Santa Rosa, which is slated to open in September. Thinking to open up the Sonoma dispensary in the.
Can I have clarification about that? How many stores currently have opened?
Um, we have two current storefronts open, both in Pennsylvania.
Okay. Thank you.
Under, under the Justice Grown brand are two other owners, Barry Wood and Jewel Matheson have dispensaries that are. Open and operating currently.
And then when did those two open?
Peace and Medicine was in two thousand and seven and the Sonoma Patient Group was in two thousand and four.
But of Justice Grown currently open storefronts, which I understood to be two, how many of, when did those open?
Two thousand and seventeen was the first one and in two thousand and nineteen was the second one.
And when specifically in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen?
John, can you speak to the specific date?
Yeah, it was at the end of twenty seventeen, uh, cause it got up and running in twenty eighteen.
What about the one in two thousand nineteen?
That's the one in Dixon City. Uh, it's been open since the end of last year and it's now got its legs in twenty twenty.
What does that mean?
Uh, you know, when you first open, you're, uh, still working out the kinks. It's now fully functioning and operating and on its feet. I think it's profitable.
I actually don't know what that means, but what is the date that it was open to the public?
Um, I am, uh, going off memory, but I would say it opened in the public late in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
We kind of like to say when the dust settles.
Um, and for Justice Grown, how many applications or RFP, RFQ responses do you have pending right now?
Uh, we don't have any pending except for some dispensaries in Illinois. Uh, as we mentioned last time, we've been successful in winning them. Uh, we were awarded two of the fourteen dispensaries in the entire state of Utah, for example. So those aren't pending, but we're now working on opening our dispensaries in Salt Lake City and St. George's County. Uh, so that's an example. We also have, uh, not pending, but have won. Three of the thirty-six dispensaries for the entire state of New Jersey and, uh, we are opening those as well.
Uh, my next question, um, for your local reps, Jewel and Ken. Um, what is your involvement and what will be your involvement if this business opens?
Okay, Ken Brown here. Uh, thank you, council. Uh, I would be facilitating ongoing discussions with the council and the staff. On how Justice Grown could be good community partners.
Any add anything? And for my, uh, for my last question for now is, so who will be the DDD operations manager? How's that person selected?
Barry would be, would be the day-to-day operations director. Um, when we first get the dispensary up and operating and as we settle in, we would hire managers, shift managers. Be the primary point of contact, um, throughout the work week. Uh, Barry Wood would be the, uh, operations director who would be on site at the dispenser initially.
And actually I have one more question. Um, so based on the last meeting and the questions asked, so you all came in with. Sort of lower expected daily numbers. Um, and I was wondering if you had anything to add about that, about. Why that is or what it means and.
Yeah, historically, uh, yeah, thanks for asking the question. Um, we've found that if we plan for rather conservative financial models, we end up faring quite well. So, um, the, the model that we put together, um, matches that. And so it's not quite as ambitious as what some of our other, um, the other great applicants have proposed to you. But it reflects our experience or over a decade of experience in operating cannabis retail space. Um, and, uh, gives ourselves quite a bit of room, um, room for error with a more conservative model.
Yeah, I think just to add to that, the, the Coastal guy, uh, acknowledged, and I think properly, that. All of the four operators here know what they're doing, so it's a, it's gonna be a difficult choice for the council. But, uh, we did not mean to imply that we weren't gonna get as many customers as somebody else would. I mean, uh, we, as Siobhan said, try to be conservative, over-deliver, rather than be the team that, you know, makes big promises. And then can't, uh, can't, can't keep.
Okay, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you very much. All right, on to me. So, uh, with regards to the community benefits, uh, what organizations do you currently have relationships with? And what services do you foresee providing?
Sure, so, uh, one of the first things that we did when we asked ourselves what community organizations we wanted to partner with was to look at what issues were. Plaguing the Bay Area. And it was brought to my attention, um, as many of you may be aware, that Bay Area is, uh, a hub for human trafficking. And so we decided to reach out to Verity, which is the nonprofit of the year in two thousand and nineteen, as well as in two thousand and nine, eighteen. Uh, selected by the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors to see what their wish list was and, and how we could support them. Um, and so we decided to allocate over five thousand square feet of space. In our dispensary in Santa Rosa for Verity to expand their services. So that is the nonprofit that we have focused on supporting the most. In addition, we provide, um. Emergency housing for victims of human trafficking. We've been doing that since two thousand and eighteen. We also donated over twelve hundred dollars to Verity, um, in our last, uh, community fundraiser. Um, in addition, we sponsored a flood relief fundraiser last year for the Leonito Roadhouse. And we're able to raise about fifteen hundred dollars. And again, these are all things that we've done historically, which is what we've chosen to, to highlight in our community benefits section. Um, to show you folks that we've been showing up and being good community allies for years now. These are not just promises that we're making the community, but things that we've been able to uphold, um, worthly. Um, we also sponsored an exponent event set on by the National Diversity and Inclusion Cannabis Alliance. Our company covered the filing fees and drafted the filing documents for over sixty individuals. Um, we would commit to furthering the support of our veterans through bringing this program to Sonoma. And offering pro bono legal representation for our veterans in need. I'd like to talk about things that we've done to support wildfire prevention and how we showed up. To support the Bennett Valley firefighters during the Nuns Canyon Fire. Um, as I mentioned during the last presentation, we raised and donated over four thousand dollars to the Bennett Valley Fire Department. And during the fires, um, one of our brave colleagues at the time. Uh, stayed on site to fill the fire trucks with water from our well and kept the generator running to support the water pump. Um, so. In addition to saving six homes, uh, on the neighboring, um, excuse me, six neighboring homes, uh, adjacent to the farm. Um, we've also continued to mow our neighbors' lawns. We have quite a few senior, um. Folks who are seniors in our, our community and our neighborhood who are otherwise not able-bodied to mow their own lawns and create that fire setback. So we take that on ourselves and, and help those neighbors out each season to help them with wildfire prevention. In Sonoma, we've identified, um, a few local organizations that we would work and partner with. La Luz, we've identified, um, we would want to work with them to develop our local hiring plan and recruitment plan. Um, in addition to Pets Life Line and the Cancer Support Group, um, which is represented with one of the, um. Founders on our community impact board.
Have you reached out to these local organizations and involved a relationship with them or is it? A hopeful thing for the future?
Yeah, we have. Um, so, uh, we've reached out to Maria Castillo, who is on our community impact board. We've reached out to Bill Borum. I believe he's written a letter to you folks, um, about involvement with our group. Um, and Bonnie Joy is also a, uh, member of our community impact board. So Jewel Matheson has had relationships with these folks for a number of years now and has been a community ally with them. On a variety of different projects, um, but in discussions with Justice Grown's goals and, uh, community impact targets. Um, we've had a number of conversations with these folks.
On, can I just jump in and say one thing, um, about the community impact board? Um, many of you know that I'm a breast cancer survivor, which was, I'm so excited to be working with Bonnie Joy. I feel like she and I are gonna do so much good. Um, we've already brought Dr. Holter, a, a. A cannabis specialist to our, our city. She has office hours now. Um, we've been doing educational forums. I think we've done a loan in Sonoma, uh, eighteen. Just, just in the city of Sonoma, not including the county. Um, so I'm just so excited with that synergy of the hospital, the cancer support network. And Bonnie Joy and I, both as cancer survivors, uh, to be able to offer, um, pay cancer patients. Uh, other resources. Everyone knows that whenever you go through, um, an illness, a cancer, there's, there's a lot of. Un- unexpected things that come your way. Uh, and I've just been so grateful for all the help I've, and the assistance that I've gotten from the cancer support network. So, I'm excited. My, my new title will be community outreach coordinator. And I'm really excited to continue that work in Sonoma with Justice Grown. And, you know, to be honest, Ken and I had a few different operators come and ask for partnership. And I really didn't really want to step in. Sonoma Patient Group is, you know, we're a small mom and pops. We didn't have the money for that. And then I ran into Siobhan and she started talking about the, the Justice Grown, the organization she was working for. And you know that both Ken and I are very political, that, and that has been an important aspect of Sonoma Patient Group, he loves. So, we've been involved with ASA, Americans for Safe Access, moving this ball forward of, um, the political ball of marijuana. Which has been, um, so maligned. When you look at what's been done in the name of the drug wars. We need to rectify that. If we're gonna move forward with any kind of integrity, we need to look to write some of the. of the wrongs we've done, which is why Ken and I decided to step in with Justice Grown. I looked at their website, and again, not things that they're promising to do. They've already expunged records of cannabis convictions that should have never even have been there in the first place, always communities of color. Okay, I'm getting hyped up on my soapbox here. I won't do that, but that's why I stepped in. I'm so excited to be part of this cleaning up of the mess that we've created with the drug wars. And I don't know if you want to speak more to that, John, but really, it's your work that made me want to step forward.
I appreciate that, Jewel. As Jewel's alluding to, you know, our...
And we've lost them. Let's go ahead and give John a moment to reply, join back in, but I have another question, and perhaps Siobhan can answer it.
Sure.
As we wait John to come in. Same question that I asked for the previous group. When you go about selecting a location, kind of what are the metrics that you're looking at? What do you, what's your approach?
All right, yeah, thanks. One of, obviously, one of the first things that we check are setbacks from daycare centers, schools, playgrounds, sensitive areas, youth centers, libraries. We really look at neighborhood compatibility. It's really important to us that our neighbors are comfortable with what we're doing and excited about the opportunity to welcome us as new neighbors. We look at traffic exposure and sufficient parking. That's very important as we grow and expand, that we have plenty of parking on-site for our customers. And accessibility is important to us. We look at a safe path of travel for pedestrians, in addition to a safe trap, a safe path of travel from the parking lot to the point of entry. And one thing that we've learned over the years, and it's very important to look for, are overhead fire sprinklers. This is a very costly enhancement to make to a building and can interrupt a quick opening date if this feature is not already within a building. So pretty simple, but in the town of Sonoma, with it being so small and inventory being what it is, it's quite challenging to find suitable property that meet all of those requirements. But our team has been looking for quite some time, and we're really excited to present to you the locations that we've found.
Thank you. I'm not seeing John back in yet. Is he one of the attendees now? Have you been able to... I'm hearing a sky.
He's calling.
Well, Siobhan, if you want to, I mean, just to fit it, we can button up that point and then move on. If you can describe some of the work that Justice Grown has done on expunging records, we can hear that, and then we'll go along.
Sure. Yeah, so John founded Lowy &amp; Lowy, which is a civil rights defense firm based out of Chicago, and they have a long history of representing people who have been wrongfully convicted pro bono. So if you were to go to the Lowy &amp; Lowy website homepage, you can see a lengthy list of news articles, PR, and... Guys, John trying to call in. Speaking to the law firm's history, so it's quite inspiring, and as Jewel mentioned, it was one of the reasons that I was originally attracted to the company, just its history of incredible work serving not just underserved communities, but communities that have been impacted by the drug war and the racial injustices and disparities that exist in this country.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any additional or follow-up questions?
Mr. Mayor, David, again, if we could ask the question about the COVID response to the pro formas and also the future for the impact that our pro forma may have if we open up to more than one dispensary.
So we'll allow it.
Oh, COVID, is that the question?
The question, did you hear the question? So the question is...
It must be so frustrating.
Siobhan, if you wanted to take the call from John, so you can kind of explain what's going on, and then we can fix that.
And Mayor Harvey, maybe one thing that we could do is, if he can't get back on Zoom, maybe Siobhan could just put him on cellphone on speaker, and he could participate that way.
That works, too.
We can go old school.
All right. John, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Sort of. We can get it as close to a mic as possible, Siobhan.
Yes.
Wherever the mic is on your device, hold it right up to there.
Okay.
Can we, can we try again, John?
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I was right at the most important part, and my computer died, so you'll have to bear with me. But I did want to make the case for us. I started to say that we are a civil rights law firm that has done a lot of important work and that that has infused our cannabis company and has driven us. And for that reason, we are extremely committed to the community causes that Siobhan was referencing, including financially. And Siobhan talked about relatively modest sums that we've earned by fundraising in Southern California, and the reason those sums are relatively modest, keep in mind, is because we don't have no dispensary in California, and so we're pre-profitability. So the money that we're contributing is through fundraisers and such. If we are fortunate enough to be one of the companies chosen at Sonoma, or the company chosen at Sonoma, we are committed to a financial contribution equal to any of our competitors. I explained last time that we want you, the city of Sonoma, to be able to choose the best applicant and not have to worry about, well, one's gonna offer a little more money than the other. So we are equally committed to donating a million dollars, and I...
You better not say that the last people got ripped open for it.
The last people, in fairness, equivocated a little bit. And I give them credit for their integrity, because what they were saying was, you know, if things change, then we might have to change. And believe me, you'd rather have them say that now than later. But what I would like to say to you...
I agree.
What I would like to say to you is that this is gonna be a hard decision by Sonoma, and as the coastal guy admitted, you couldn't go wrong if you picked any of them. So I feel that we're obligated to try to distinguish ourselves. And the way we will distinguish ourselves is we will make the commitment unequivocal and fed on what happens in the future. If it breaks against us, we're still gonna honor that commitment. And council members, Harrington's question, is that enforceable? It is. It's essentially a contract. We are gonna commit in writing to donate this amount, and it's a contract just like any of the city's other vendors, whether it's the council turns over or anything. It's an obligation. We also have recently secured funding, which we can, you know, we didn't get asked the financial question, but we now have a $25 million line of credit, which we were basically about to draw $3 million on. So we are good for the million dollars. So what I'm saying to you, city council, is if you see fit to pick us, we will honor that pledge of a million dollars, no matter what happens, including if things don't break our way and competition arises, because we have demonstrated that we can thrive in competition. And more importantly, the worst thing that would happen is, we would be using cannabis money, not necessarily to profit Justice Grown, but to give back to the community. So we're presumably not gonna be operating at a loss if we donated $200,000 a year. We're gonna make more than that. What it really means is, it might be an uncomfortable amount of money to donate, because it might be a high percentage of profits. But as Jewel said, we are community-minded, we live our values, and if we have to become a quasi nonprofit, because we're giving away a large portion of our profits, then that's what we'll do, because that's what we're about. That's why we're in cannabis. The people that own our company have a lot of money, and they're in cannabis because they want to use a drug that has historically caused so much pain in the community to give back to the community. So it will be up to us to honor that pledge. I'm sorry, I hope you guys can still hear me.
Yeah. Okay.
So I have one more question that our planning director reminded me of. So in your planning and your application and looking for the future, what contingencies have you made for the November ballot being successful and/or the political landscape changing and the number of dispensaries shifting?
Yeah, you know, we've talked about that internally, and John discussed with you folks at our last hearing, an offer that we could make with the city. We are of the opinion that it was a good balanced compromise to not adjust, or rather impact, the local flavor and character of Sonoma with too many dispensaries on each corner. But we do honor the democratic process, and if council decides that the city would be better served by more than one dispensary, we'll support that decision. As John has mentioned, we've thrived in competitive markets before, and many folks think it's easy to operate a cannabis dispensary, but lo and behold, there are tricks to the trade, and our team has weathered that storm. So I'm confident in our ability to launch successfully and sustain a business throughout the ever-changing tides, which is the cannabis industry. It's one thing that we've all learned at this point, is that we just can't count on the environment staying the same. So our ability to adapt and be flexible is part of the reason that we have been successful and been in the industry as long as we have.
I have a longstanding relationship with John Early, the man who was behind the ballot measure. I have ongoing communication with him, and I feel that I'm best suited to work with John on how we move forward with both the ballot measure, and if he chooses not to have a ballot measure. He is aware of all of the contingencies, and he's a good guy, you know, and, you know, if the ballot measure goes on the ballot, believe me, I understand the ballot measure. I understand the process of what it takes to put something on the ballot, and the power of individuals in the community to steer their own course into the future. And, you know, I mean, I mean, it wouldn't serve me or the citizens or Justice Grown to ignore John Early or to denigrate John Early. I think he wants to provide a service, and I'm willing to be there for him to help him.
Mr. Mayor, could I just share something? First of all, thank you, thank you, Jewel, partnering with Bonnie Joy is amazing.
Oh, she's so dynamic.
I know. The two of you, yeah, and the two of you, thank you, Ken, for offering what you said just now about John Early. I appreciate that. So, you know, Jewel, like I said, I think Bonnie Joy is an amazing person, and I'm so glad that the two of you, having served on the hospital board, you know, one of the first things we wanted to do was to be able to get free mammograms for women, and that's exactly what we've been committed to. So I appreciate your bringing that issue up. Thank you.
Good medal.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions for Justice Grown?
Oh, you know, I just have a comment. I'm a fundraiser, that's my profession, and...
I have your sign on our lawn, Medal.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So the thing is, you know, when you make a commitment, a pledge, it doesn't have to be three years, it doesn't have to be five years, it could be eight years. So when we keep talking about a million dollars, that's why I wanted that to be, there was a clarification. And whatever that agreement is, it could be stretched out, but it's still a million dollars. And for all of you who are applicants, I think people should hear that. It's not like we expect you to plunk a million dollars, although I'd love to win the lottery, and maybe I could do it. But I really appreciate, I think, John, your comments, they were well-taken by me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it for Justice Grown? We're set here? Great. Okay, so if, thank you very much, Justice Grown, appreciate your time and your efforts coming before us today, and let's go ahead and goodbye to them and move on to the next applicant. Does anybody need to take a break from council?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll take a short break and jump back in with, who's next? Lighthouse, all right. Well, that's odd. Also fun.
Think I'm okay. I know there was an issue. I mean, the labor and employment, I think it's really important, especially since the majority of the council voted for the fif- I think it was fifteen dollars an hour. And I think I have seventeen dollars next to your name. Is that what, did you, is that what you all have offered? I can't find all these details right now. Or I put seventeen by myself. I'm sorry. So I have fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes, Madeline, this is Brad Davis.
Sure.
Hi, we are a compensation for our consultants is fifteen dollars an hour. They also earn tips so that and and on average, a consultant normally earns approximately two dollars an hour more on tips on an average four dollars a week.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Thank you. And could you explain the labor peace agreement a little bit if someone can do that? I saw that and somehow I think it was connected with a with a union, but that's okay. I just, what is the labor peace agreement? If it's okay, if I can ask that.
Sure. Evan, you want to cover this for us, please, sir?
You know, I think we are at nineteen employees. Once we hit that nineteen employees, we are committed to a labor peace agreement. So
Oh, all right.
So we're anticipating around fifteen or so employees, twelve to fifteen when we launch. But as soon as we hit that max, we will transition over.
I see. Thank you. And I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I, it just reminds me, are you aware that Sonoma has a local minimum wage ordinance?
I I wasn't off top of my head, Evan. Is it the California living wage?
No.
I believe we hit that in the application. We did reference that based, and I believe it was right around the fifteen fifty or so mark, correct?
So you're, the wages you're saying are just whatever the minimum wage is in Sonoma?
What we are offering, well, Brad, I've got to defer.
Yes, yes, that we have at a minimum, the minimum wage.
Well, it'd be pretty hard to pay less than the legally mandated minimum wage.
Right.
Okay, um, anyway.
You're right.
In terms of opening a commercial storefront, if you were this likely applicant, what is the timeline from the date of selection through opening your store that you anticipate?
Hi, Amy, this is Joseph. Sorry, you can't see me, so it's obviously a black screen and just the voice, but once we have building permits in hand, we anticipate the build out. You know, once we actually physically receive building permits and are okay to break ground, it taking roughly ninety days to complete the store based off of the location that, you know, we selected and were discussing previously, but that's kind of the timeline and obviously that's with respect to the city and permits being issued, all things considered.
Did you have an estimate yourself about how long it would take to obtain building permits?
Go ahead.
Oh, from from David, we're thinking about forty-five days. I think after what we had spoke about in pre-discussion, we were looking at around forty-five days or so.
I know this is like totally different. It's probably just because I go to court. I'm so unused to formal settings where people call everyone by their first name when they don't know each other. It's very unusual. Are you talking about David Storer, our planning director?
Yes, yes, I.
Okay, so I'm sorry. I just, I'm like, I'm so used to people referring to us as Councilwoman Harrington or Mayor Harvey. It's very unusual. Perhaps it's the industry, but, okay, planning.
We respect that. Thank you for pointing that out.
What is, it's not just you. It seems like it's everybody on tonight. Maybe it's because it's Zoom. I don't know. But council, I mean, planning director, did you have a discussion with them about the timeline for the planning permits they want and how long that would take? And is that forty-five days?
Well, the what we did in the the first chart that we showed tonight, depending on the type of facility they choose, if it's simply just going into an existing structure, then yes, it can go very quickly through the planning commission because then you're just talking about TIs. So when you get through the planning commission, depending on the sequel review, then we would then go into the building permit phase and that would be a the turnaround of about forty-five days. Once the entitlement is over. The entitlement, as you know, could take different forms, but we can usually get there within four to six months, I think is what we put on the chart.
So it's forty, four to six months plus forty-five days?
Right. If, if there's a new bill anyway, that could go, that could go longer.
Thanks. That's it for me. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Amy. On to Councilmember David Cook.
Yeah, I just have one question and I keep asking all the panelists. How many visits do you think that you would have to have every day to become profitable?
I, hi, Councilman. We'll transition to using Councilman and Councilwoman, but you know, as this has been discussed, obviously COVID and the impacts, I think we were previously discussing that in our meeting in in May. But, you know, we would like to see, I think you're asking realistically for a break even point as to when we can anticipate becoming profitable and things of that nature, but we would like to roughly see at a minimum of hundred customers per day, if that answers your question. And that's kind of what we would anticipate being a break even. But on an average basis, while we're coming out of this COVID, depending on obviously when we're able to open up, I'd like to see about a hundred fifty to a hundred sixty customers in there on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Vice Mayor Rachel Hunley.
Where is she? Am I here?
Second, second page.
Um, let's see. All right. First question is, how many locations do you all have open?
Right now, we have two locations and that are currently open and running and I think to anticipate the follow-up. The first location was opened in the city of Coachella in April of twenty eighteen. It coincided with the music festival that was happening in the city. The second location is in the city of Palm Springs, about forty-five to fifty miles away from that first location in Coachella that opened November of twenty nineteen on the first of November.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And how many applications or submissions pursuant to RFPs or RFQs do you have pending right now?
Right now, we have, including the city of Sonoma, we have four applications pending. And, you know, I I don't know how familiar you are with social equity programs that are happening. But we are working with a social equity applicant on the East Coast in Massachusetts and we are working on six applications over there in that state as well on the East Coast.
And so my next question is for Melanie King. What is your role going to be with this business if it were to open?
Well, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Hunley. My role would be as a community liaison and a manager. So my role would be to make sure that communication between the dispensary and the community is flowing and positive, doing outreach, including education, and generally making a comfortable zone for the dispensary to exist in the city of Sonoma by working with the citizens.
Thank you. And so who who is going to be the day-to-day operations manager and how is that person selected?
That person hasn't been selected yet. We do have a general manager, Jennifer Montgomery's on our line and she would be a GM. I would be in the door day-to-day, boots on the ground and and being the face of the company and also the face of Sonoma simultaneously. And we hope to recruit out for that position. Our hiring goals for recruitment for all of our staff is to hire one hundred percent Sonoma Valley-based employees.
All right. My third question is for your Palm Springs location. Are you aware that your the the status of the Secretary of State's website says that your corporate agent has resigned?
Our what?
Your Service of Process agent on the California Secretary Secretary of State website. It's listed as agent resigned. Doesn't really matter to me, but I saw it because I was looking at it.
Maybe that's a questionnaire, an answer from Nelson Hardeman. He's our legal team, our legal and compliance team here.
I will take a look at it. It's my understanding that it's one of these for agents for hire, so I.
Yeah, that was one of those companies. They might have gone under. So my last question is, so you guys did have as your self-imposed minimum wage, the lowest of all of the finalists? And would you be willing to commit to a higher wage, a minimum of seventeen dollars, which is in the ballpark of the other groups? And a related question would be, would you be willing to commit now to signing a labor peace agreement rather than waiting to get to nineteen employees?
I think that's a great question and I would, of course, be open to doing the minimum wage increase up to seventeen dollars an hour and then plus the tips. So they would be roughly at about nineteen to twenty dollars an hour. And the labor peace agreement, I'm happy to discuss between the city and us, you know, what that looks like and moving through that.
All the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With regards, so my questions are the same. With regards to community benefits, what organizations do you currently have contact or partnerships with? And what what services do you perceive providing?
Thank you very much for this question because I think this is one of the questions where we really stand out from the rest of the field. And the field's a great field. I agree with everyone who said that, absolutely. However, being a citizen of Sonoma, what I've seen are certain philanthropic ventures that maybe pick one particular benefactor depending. The problem I see with that is that Sonoma is a diverse and changing community. We've seen the fires, we've seen COVID, we've had homeless issues. And so rather than pre-selecting nonprofits that we would give only to, we would prefer to create a committee of citizens of Sonoma that would actually be completely separate from Lighthouse, who would make the decisions about where to put those funds. And this is for a few different reasons. Number one is Impact One Hundred, in my opinion, has been one of the most successful nonprofits in Sonoma. I love the work that they've done and I love the flexibility that they've had year to year to donate to different causes. The second one is because I'm an industry veteran and one of my roles at Cannacraft was to vet requests for sponsorship and dollars. Interestingly enough, sometimes those requests would come in before they pre-re- pre-reviewed those requests with their boards. And in some cases, the boards were not comfortable accepting money from cannabis companies. This is especially true with children's charities. Now, I don't like that to be true as a member of the community and other, for example, spirit and wine industry can give to these charities without a second look in a city like Sonoma. However, we want to be sensitive to everyone in Sonoma and their opinions about with to do with money and sensitive to who's accepting those dollars and making sure that they're comfortable with it. We're not imposing ourselves upon this community. We're trying to embed ourselves in this community. So I think it's really important that, yes, there's a lot of great nonprofits out there and, yes, we're so looking forward to being able to donate a substantial amount that we're looking to donate. However, we think Sonomans would know how to spend that best.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, I have no further questions. David Storer, did you want to ask your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, that would be the question relating to the one that we asked during the proposal review committee regarding COVID.
Sure.
And then also how that, if you can provide that response, then also address the issue of your pro forma relative to the opening up of more than one dispensary retail in the city. Thank you.
We add an addendum to respond to how you will respond to the ballot measure if the ballot measure goes through.
So the ballot measure is a challenging question because there's a lot of ifs about that and there's a lot of demystification. As a citizen of Sonoma, I believe, in my personal opinion, that there was confusion around the ballot initiative in itself. Ballot initiative was kind of packaged as bringing a dispensary to Sonoma versus what actually is in the text of the initiative. I have belief in my fellow Sonomans that they now realize what the initiative is asking and considering there's been so much consideration to have just one dispensary. I I would be hard-pressed to see the majority of Sonomans vote that initiative in. That being said, the truth is that this is not going to be a one-horse town forever and we have to be able to be nimble and adaptable. One of the things I think is very important that hasn't been talked about at all in this conversation is cannabis tourism. Cannabis tourism is here. If you have a list of discussion with many people who work in tasting rooms, they're going to tell you first question they often get asked is where they can buy cannabis locally. Those tax dollars are going into other cities. So bringing cannabis tourism into this whole initial conversation is really important because it's where we're going. The money's going to be coming in. And eventually there will be more dispensaries. It's just going to happen. So I think preparing for not only the tourists that are already here and how to handle those, but preparing for the cannabis tourism that's going to come by having a dispensary in town are both important.
And Mel, that was great. And David, just to, you know, touch on, I believe, your question. You know, COVID, as we were discussing, it did have a, you know, downward effect on our projections and what the potential, you know, implications of that might have. But, you know, like Melanie was saying, it won't be a one-horse town forever. Competition breeds excellence. You know, and that is what it is. And that's my belief. We're in the city of Palm Springs and if you look at the population there on an annual basis, it's about forty, forty-five thousand people. I know that's a little bit larger than the city of Sonoma, but we have eleven dispensaries in the town. And I know it is possible to still be successful when you're looking at the amount of dispensaries to the population. So, you know, we're here and you have four very, very qualified applicants. You know, it will happen at some point and, you know, we're open to it. I think it's a benefit, not a not a downside.
Great. All right. Do we have further questions for Lighthouse?
No, you know, Mr. Mayor, I do have something I wanted to share, which I think is really great. I think under Labor and Employment Plan, the plan described compensation and opportunities for continuing education and training for employees. You know, this year I'm with the Women's Club and we decided that it's important, we recognize students are headed for Stanford, Cal, all of these wonderful places. But there are a lot of young people who possibly don't have that prowess. And so what we've decided to do is give funds to young females, because we are a women's club, to young women who are, who need money for books, who are going into vocational training, which I think is honorable, just as honorable as going to Stanford. So I just thought, I I noticed that you believe you believe in continuing education. I've always felt that's that's really an admirable thing because sometimes that's passed over for the stars. And I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Agarante. Appreciate that.
Can we talk about education or is that a separate topic? Because I do love the topic of continuing education, if I might.
I'll allow it.
Thank you. I know I stuck my foot in the door there.
Am I a shill? I didn't know that.
I'm not persistent. Continuing education, I was actually the head of continuing education at Langley Porter UCSF for several years in the Department of Psychiatry and Neurology. So it's something that's near and dear to my heart and I'm very passionate about. for several years in the Department of Psychiatry and Neurology. So it's something that's near and dear to my heart and I'm very passionate about. One of the challenges I see in the cannabis industry is a lack of very strong education with the first line of defense. When people come in for the first time to a dispensary, that first person they speak to, there's a kind of an assumption that that person is an expert, has a lot of experience, has been trained. When the reality is, you could, it's more difficult to, not to belittle this at all, but it's more difficult to become a hairstylist than it would be to a budtender. And this person's kind of offering not medical advice, but certainly lifestyle advice and advice about certain products that could impact your life. So the fact that education is at the forefront of the entire model around Lighthouse is something else that makes us different. The entire experience is not going into self-educate into a dispensary, and that's the paradigm that you've seen a lot in the cannabis industry that's not spout anymore. People now are going in and they want one-on-one direct education. They want to be understood and listened to. And that's exactly how this works. And in order for that to work, you have to have extremely educated consultants. And that comes from the top down. It comes from their management, and then it works its way down so that everybody has the same baseline of information. And then it also goes out into the community. So I've already been in conversation with the community center. We would love to offer free seminars for people to come in. Some people are embarrassed to walk in the door. Still, that stigma is there, and we have to honor that and give people time to come in their own pace. So webinars are a great example, along with that one-on-one. I personally have gone into many houses in Sonoma and done what I call Tupperware parties for people who maybe were uncomfortable to take that first step in, but they were comfortable enough with me to sit down and talk about their anxiety, their sleeplessness, or other issues that they may consider cannabis therapy applicable to, and that's really important. Then finally, last point I want to make is the ones that we really want to reach out to especially are the educators in the Sonoma Valley Unified School District. There's a big divide between the cannabis industry and education. Parents don't know how to talk about it. We want to have conversations about how we can educate parents to identify and derail, detain, just underage, no. And also educators, how do we help them enforce that 21-plus and responsible consumption? So that is a hallmark of the entire Sonoma plan, is to bring educators and the cannabis community together, because it's important.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melanie. I appreciate it. Or Ms. King, thank you. And do we have any further questions for Lighthouse?
Thank you all very
I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Bye, folks.
Does anybody need a break again? Are we okay? All right, good. All right. The next one is Spark. I just adore you, Madeline. Just, it's so good. Sparky, that's perfect.
You know, I was thinking of having a joint. I was thinking of bringing out a What is it? Be funny. Because somebody, didn't somebody get in trouble in another city? Yeah, why wouldn't you do that? Bring out a drink beer or something. Golly.
We need some candy cigarettes that are joints.
Yeah, there we go.
He also got in trouble because they threw a cat, so there was some cat sparrow involved in the, what was it, Vallejo?
Yep.
I think you're too young to remember that candy, but that used to be a candy that you would have, toy cigarettes.
They used to have those on the, on the ice cream trucks in Sonoma. They did. It was early on. They what? They sold them at the Chocolate Cow, apparently, though I support.
He has to smoke those on my front porch. Smoke that down.
I was more of a chew tobacco product guy.
Some big league.
Big league. Not that, you know, glad it's all gone. Okay. So are we ready? Yes, we're ready. We've lost Wendy, but I think that'll be all right. She'll come back. We've got Mercy Wellness. Mercy, I appreciate you joining us and your time tonight, this evening.
This is not Mercy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Spark. Spark, I'm so sorry. Mercy's the one who decided to leave us. Spark, I apologize. It's getting, it's getting late. We're getting, I am anyway. So Spark, thank you for joining us. And go ahead. We're starting with Madeline, then going to Amy, then going to David, then to myself. So Madeline.
You know, I think we're still waiting on a couple of people to come in.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like Amy says that she got kicked out, and Erica's having a difficult time getting in, I believe. I got kicked out initially as well.
Erica's here.
Oh, you're there. Okay, great.
Andrew's kicked out.
Oh, there's Amy.
A here now. That's Amy. Okay.
Andrew's waiting to be, Andrew Dobbs Kramer's waiting to be promoted.
Oh, my God.
Amy's on.
Wow, this would have been a great high school thing.
I don't know why my video's not on.
We need the younger generation here to help figure this out.
I'm not seeing Andrew as an attendee, so maybe he will need to rejoin.
I'll text to him.
Eric, with your permission, I'd like to continue, start right?
Yeah.
If that's okay?
Go for it.
All right, Madeline, let's go ahead.
Okey-dokey. Well, you know, let's see. I know that there were others that did this also. Something about including their performer for at least three years of operations, which I think is nice. I like that with that. So do you have any thoughts about, you feel that that is what you're able to do? Because some people don't have that same thing.
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that? My sound went out for just a second.
The application included a performer for at least three years of operation, which I think is really great. How did you come to that conclusion? I like that.
Thank you. So we have, we've been operating since 2007 here in Sonoma County. And I've been doing the finance since day one. And I think we have just a pretty good idea of how things are going to go in different areas in the Bay Area, because we really, you know, we just really have seen the seasonality factors and the ups and downs over time. So at this point, we feel pretty confident in, in looking three years out.
Oh, thank you. Okay. You know, I think this was a common, seemed to seem somewhat common. Cannabis delivery businesses, something there was like the hours that people are open 8:00 to 8:00 P.M. And I think that there was some discussion, and I'm not sorry for saying delivery, but I think our ordinance was somewhere in here. David, if you could comment, I think it was something to, I forget the hours, for being open.
Yeah, I'll look that up right now. I know something that was pointed out as a point of concern, but I think they'll all see all of the hours that we provide.
8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M., I think, is allowed. Is that right? Some people said 8:00 to 10:00 P.M. That's not you, but so it just seems some, maybe it was just a confusing question, I don't know.
Council, council member, this is Amy Jenkins. Actually, that was something that we put in our application. We didn't put the correct hours, but obviously, we would fully comply with the city's ordinance being 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. So we're sorry for that.
It was a problem. I just noticed a lot of people had, you know, it sort of floated around there. And the labor and employment, the application confirmed, the application confirmed the cannabis business would adhere to a heightened pay of $17.35 and benefit standards and practice, which I think the majority of this council would be, you know, obviously approves of. And I think that's it right now.
Thank you, Madeline. Wendy, are you seeing the, the notes in the chat from Mr. Pearson about the Andrew raising his hand and not being part of this?
Yes, and I promoted him.
It looks like he's been kicked out of the chat.
Well, I certainly apologize for that. That wasn't my intention.
It's all a new thing.
Let's have him rejoin, and I'll promote him again.
All right, good. It's getting promoted twice in one day. That's, we should be so lucky. Let's go on to Councilmember Harrington.
Oh, so my question, I actually have two questions. My first question is the same that I had for everybody, which is, when do you expect to open if you are granted the license?
I can speak to that. It's a variable. I think some folks put 45 days, and I think we actually put 243. A lot of this really depends on the planning approval process, whether there's an appeal after the selection of the location. So there's some, you know, it won't be up to us completely. The site we have selected, we look at a number of sites. The one that we like most is a relatively clean shell. My background is actually, I went to school for building and construction management, so as quick as possible is the answer. But, you know, given COVID, I don't even know if construction is allowed to start yet in Sonoma County. It is? Okay. As soon as possible. Like I said, the location we have is fairly, is fairly clean. So it'd be our objective, much in line with the city's, to get it open up as soon as possible.
So my other question is, with regard to the community benefits, we had two people say that they would give $1 million over five years, and I know that yours is $20,000 or the percentage. So in terms of your experience, probably you are the most experienced operator that exists. What is your thinking around the community benefits program and the amount that would go back to the community?
I could take that one. We have always been huge donors and supporters in our community. I also, you know, anybody who works with me, and sometimes it drives everybody crazy, knows that I am a very conservative. I'm a very conservative budgeter, and I do not want us to overpromise what, you know, what we can or can't deliver. We had a minimum of $20,000 in the first, I believe it's in the first three years, and then that expands, and that's, that's a direct community. That's directly to, to a community service, but we also have in-kind donations that bring that, that for the first two years, annual contribution up to $67,000, and that's a minimum. And in year three, that expands to $84,000 and goes up from there. So in the first five years, it is a minimum of $393,000 that we, that we will contribute to the, to the community, or 5% of our profits, if that's greater. And it potentially, it could be more than that, but I do not want to put us into a commitment that we're unable to keep, whether a second dispensary opens in town, or, you know, COVID, or, or some new virus hits. You don't know what the future is going to bring, and I want to conservatively estimate so that we can actually follow through with our promises.
I could add a piece, Councilmember. You're looking at some different business models here. We're a Northern California company. We've been around a long time. We have taken on a little bit of investors, but we didn't set out three years ago when we saw legalization with venture capital money spreading across the country, trying to roll up opportunities and applications. From, we've had the opportunity to do that. I've gotten plenty of phone calls and continue to. But we're focused on our community and where we are in, you know, Northern California, and building a real, a real business. When you have applications in dispensaries across the entire country, that's not a long-term business that anybody's going to hold. That's a roll-up scheme that's designed to win applications, to put the ball into a package, to open them up, to put revenue on the books, and to sell it to the highest bidder. And so large, large companies can, can, can run this, you know, run this industry. That's what a lot of that is. And so can some organizations make a million-dollar commitment, even though it doesn't make financial sense on that individual location? Sure, they can. Can we? No, we can't, you know. But being a local company and focusing on our community, there's a lot more community benefit than in a simple check to a nonprofit. But Amy can speak more, which is one of the very reasons we brought Amy on, is to, she has more relationships in the town of Sonoma, and she's worked on this extensively with us. So if she can speak a bit more to what we plan to do in Sonoma.
And thank you, Councilmember, for the question. And I know this is also a question that was going to be, I think, asked by another member of the council, I believe it's the mayor. But, but yes, we, we plan to make substantial investments in the community. But to Kelly's point, we wanted to be conservative in what we intended to commit for this particular community benefit component of our application. But that is not to suggest that we don't intend to contribute substantially to other local nonprofits in the community, and also address other issues that may come up. As we highlight in our application, we have, our staff makes substantial investments in the community. We pivot and adjust to respond to various incidents. As you know, Eric has been very involved in fire relief, having been a fire victim himself. So I think we wanted to be realistic in what we intended to commit to you. But there is a full intention of supplementing that, both with in-kind contributions, with volunteer services and supports from our own staff, as well as contributions to other community nonprofits. And so we will, we will certainly endeavor to be as generous as possible and to partner with as many organizations as possible. I didn't mention all the work we're already doing with Alus. So I think that, I think we just wanted to be reasonable in what we could absolutely commit to you, and that's why we came up with the number we did.
Got a lot of crap here. Who's going?
Just one second. Amy, it's interesting. One thing, I'm sure, because you say you live here. The saying is, the second most popular sport in Sonoma is opening up your checkbook.
Without a doubt, without a doubt, woman, and I can assure you that, that is not, we are not, we are not concerned about opening up our checkbooks. Actually, I was a fundraiser in my prior life also, so I certainly appreciate that. And I think the point I think we want to make is that whatever we commit to you, we're going to stick with, and it's sustainable and long-term. And as you know, as a fundraiser, you have to count on what people say and that they're going to make that happen.
Oh, no.
Mic drop.
Mic drop.
While, while we're waiting for Amy to unfreeze, I wanted to add something that, that I forgot to add in before, and it's really actually quite important. Being that we are a Sonoma County-run business, our headquarters are in Sonoma County, our cultivation is in Sonoma County, what we contribute to the community is actually everything from our business. Last year alone, we added, directly added over $9 million into our local Sonoma County economy, between wages paid, between rents paid, from local contractors that we hired, to the, all of the costs of growing our cannabis that is grown in Sonoma Valley. All of that money directly went into our local economy here in Sonoma County. It didn't leave. So yes, maybe our direct contribution is not as high as the $1 million over five years. But last year, we put $9 million into the community, and we will do that every year.
Yeah, so when we, we have what's called cost of goods sold, right, which is about 50%. That's the cost that a business spends to procure whatever they're selling, right? So if you sell marijuana for $100, then in the average of the industries, it costs you $50. Well, that $50 that we spend to procure cannabis, we spend it right here in Sonoma Valley. We grow that cannabis ourselves. We hire folks from La Luz. We hand them money to work. We hire, I can't tell you how much money I spent at Friedman's just this spring, N Y irrigation and whatnot. So because the product that we're selling, we're producing the product that we're selling, um, we're producing right here in Sonoma Valley, that's money that stays right here into the community.
So, um, I think my last question is for Eric and I, I may be misremembering this, but I think you told me this, which is that, I think it was you, wasn't you? I apologize, that, that Sonoma had room for more than one dispensary, and that if we're concerned about traffic, the best thing we could do ultimately would be to have two dispensaries, and so I'm wondering what your, you know, other people have said that their financial projections don't work with an additional dispensary, and I'm wondering, you know, what is, in terms of your projections in your business, what your thoughts are about essentially competition versus a monopoly?
Sure. Um, I, I, I think Sonoma will have room for, for uh, two and, and maybe even three dispensaries and, and four and five. You know, eventually, as cannabis becomes more and more legal, um, and deregulated and not overtaxed like it is, and they operate like normal businesses, then there's certainly more, more room. But given the high regulatory costs and whatnot, it doesn't have a lot of room uh, for too many dispensaries right now. So, take Sebastopol, for example. There's two dispensaries operating in Sebastopol. But we opened up in two thousand and seven in Sebastopol. Pieces of Medicine did, um, Spark uh, merged with them. But um, i- and Sebastopol supports two dispensaries now, but it's taken a long time to get there, right? So, that, that's the difference. Um, so I think in time, certainly, um, the pro formas, I, I, I know we've talked a lot about this, but the pro formas would be very, very different. Um, a- and, and folks would approach this very differently if we were looking at um, two retail stores. One of the problems in the industry, which I spoke to at the council, um, early on the year when we were discussing this, is, is location, right? And, and what we wanted to avoid was landlords, you know, holding a few of the prized locations and owning too much of the business and, and charging too much rent. So, rent is a big one because rent's inflated, and that's just an example of how, you know, this is not a normal atmosphere we're, we're operating in, right? When you have a limited number of uh, dispensaries and you have such selective zoning and restrictive zoning, then you're, you're limiting the number of, of possible locations and you're driving up the rent. So, when you have these high fixed costs, that's when it's really difficult to have multiple operators. As this normalizes, um, then it's easier to add more operators to the mix.
Thanks. I don't have any other questions.
I'll go ahead and ask my question. How many cl- um, customers would you have to have a day to become profitable?
Kelly.
I can answer that question. Um, let me pull up my paperwork. It's about a hundred and eighty, about a hundred and eighty customers a day is, is sort of the break-even point for us. Um, and that I believe we would hit that somewhere around month eight of operations.
Hey, thank you.
All right, council, our vice mayor, Henley.
Thank you. So, I think you kind of answered my first question, but um, I also know that there was a merger involved, but when was your first location opened?
Uh, two thousand and seven in Sebastopol.
And when was the first Spark opened?
Two thousand and twelve in San Francisco. We were the first new one under the new regulatory scheme.
Nice. And so, how many total locations are open currently?
Five. Retail.
Nice. And how many applications do you have pending or responses to RFPs or RFQs for uh, dispensaries?
One, only in Sonoma.
And um, there's a couple local affiliates uh, here, but um, I think for Amy and Eric, uh, what, what would your roles be uh, with the n- new business in Sonoma if it were to open?
Amy, do you want to go first? Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Um, so thank you for the question, um, vice mayor. Um, so the way I see my role, my title is currently strategic advisor. Um, but the way we've discussed it, as I would serve as kind of your face, um, in terms of community relations, government relations, Eric has kind of managed all of that in the past, so I would essentially assist him. So, I would be um, working with him uh, to interface with you, working with him to interface with uh, the state government as well as our nonprofits and community.
Um, uh, J- Jesse would uh, primarily be on the ground, uh, building the team. My business partner, Sean, uh, unfortunately is, is not uh, here today. Uh, he's o- operations retail. Um, I will be involved uh, with design, build-out, construction of the business, but honestly, I spend most of my time um, down the road here at the farm, uh, thinking about the cannabis, how we're going to grow the cannabis, what strains we're going to go uh, a- and grow and, and deliver to uh, folks. I, I work on a lot of, I don't know, um, n- not the nuts and bolts of, of things. I, I kind of jump around a lot. I spend a lot of time on policy, um, in uh, Sonoma County. Um, I'll work with Amy on policy in the city of Sonoma. I think there's a lot of really interesting and unique things uh, with tourism and whatnot that we can do in the city, so working directly with the council. Um, and then I put out fires all the time, not just literally, but I, I, I bounce around and uh, you know, have to deal with, you know, things that uh, pop up within the organization, whether it be um, you know, manufacturing, licensing, um, politics, uh, sometimes uh, employees and stuff like that. So, um, I bounce around a lot, um, but mostly start up and, and build out, and then the team runs operations, um, uh, the nuts and bolts of the business.
Nice. And so who's going to be doing the day-to-day management, and how is that person selected?
So, that's Jesse, and she's actually a Sonoma resident, and she can talk to you about how we're going to do our recruitment process, because we actually do have um, team members that live in Sonoma that are very excited about the prospect of um, a Sonoma location. Um, you know, many of our team members are on development tracks for supervisor, manager, and so on and so forth. We've said before that one hundred percent of our supervisor management and many of our directors started at entry-level jobs. So, Jesse can tell you guys more about that.
Hi. Um, yeah, so I started six years ago, entry level. I have a, a long-involved foundation in retail and, in traditional retail. Um, so, yeah, I would be the one getting kind of um, the operation starting, um, doing the day-to-day, uh, getting the store off the ground, um, hiring a team locally and developing that team into leadership. Um, we also, like Joe said, have some people that are already Sonoma residents that are, would be super excited to, to come and help with that as well. Um, yeah, I run the Santa Rosa store. We're, we are the highest volume store of all five, um, and are just, have um, very, very detailed operations with our delivery, which we go out to Sonoma on a daily basis as well, um, between delivery and the pickup that we're doing right now. Um, yeah, and we have a really great leadership team that would be able to step in in my absence, so I can spend a hundred percent focus on Sonoma.
Thank you. And um, I'm going to ask my last question now, but it's about um, just consideration of, I think we've talked about the it's all boring together. So, uh, your consideration of the contingency of both the November uh, ballot initiative in uh, planning out the store and doing your application and just the uh, im- unpredictability of local government and what happens after an election, and maybe there could be more dispensaries.
I can, I think we'll, we'll probably trade this one off and on a bit. Um, I'll start by, I don't think the ballot initiative is going to pass. I, I think we, 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 every, every business has, you know, risk and, and, and a gamble, and I think we uh, we're, we're taking that, that risk. Um, I, I do believe the voters of Sonoma are uh, intelligent and well-educated, and that they'll recognize that the city has gone through an extensive process um, just to find an applicant, to select one, and that they don't actually want to take one small corner of this, of the, of the city and allow an unlimited amount of dispensary. So, we have faith in um, in the electorate there. Um, as far as um, changing council members um, in the future, you know, like I said, uh, if the ch- council wants to open it up in the future, um, you know, it's most likely going to be another competitor process, and it'll have um, a, a regular, or a legislative timeline and this same sort of process again. And there is a first, uh, like one of the gentlemen, uh, prior said, there's a sort of first movers advantage, so it will be well-established, and we'll be able to handle um, the uh, you know, pressure from multiple organizations in the future. If we're lucky enough to be chosen here, we'll have our feet on the ground and be able, be able to adapt to that.
And I, I'd just like to jump in and um, say that many, well, several of the people that you are seeing here from Spark today, we have been around since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Um, and so we have, um, we've seen the city councils change, the board of supervisors change, you know, ballot initiatives come and go, and um, we've seen the landscape change. And part of, you know, what Kelly was speaking to in terms of the way that we use our experience, our expertise to um, run conservatively and be able to potentially anticipate these changes and balance them, we've continued to be able to organically grow through all of these changes, through Santa Rosa, opening up, um, at one point, when was it, Kelly? In two thousand and eleven? And at one point, they had something like fifty different dispensaries, because basically they had um, uh, let a certain type of ordinance sort of expire, and everybody just busted open doors. And we were able to, you know, weather through that storm, and we have always been able to, um, you know, with conservative, uh, you know, conservative finance operations and, you know, treating our our team members right, we've been able to weather through all of those different, different things. And I anticipate that, you know, should we get this permit or this license that, you know, that we would be able to, um, you know, weather through anything that came through, we have before.
You, that's all my questions.
Very much. I think we've kind of heard the community benefits piece, so I won't belabor that point. Um, what is your approach to choosing a location?
I, I, I'll, I'll, I think I got that one. Uh, well, of course, it's very limited. Like I, like I mentioned before, I, I spoke to the importance of uh, the council, uh, going through the beauty contest first and then allowing applicants to go out. Otherwise, um, you would be stuck with, you know, whoever you got in the right location. So, the first thing we look for um, is uh, community compatibility. Parking's always the biggest concern, whether you're growing cannabis on, you know, at the end of a road in Mendocino, or you're operating a dispensary in the city of uh, Sonoma. Uh, you know, parking and traffic is the, the first thing that upsets uh, the neighborhood. So, parking is important. Um, the other thing is that, that the metrics of the build-out, in, in the capital, the capex, we call it, or the capital expenditures necessary to get up and running, uh, and then the cost of the rent. So, does the build-out cost? Does the rent cost? Um, does your commitments to the community and your employees? How does all that add up, and is that a viable business or not? So, as it relates to location, you're looking at rent, you're looking at a landlord that you like and you trust, because things may come up in the future. For example, in San Francisco, we've had to go back and renegotiate uh, rents at two locations in the city. The city's taken a real hard hit because of COVID, uh, and because of um, some of the looting that's happened recently, and we've actually had to go back and work with those landlords. So, we look for a quality landlord to um, uh, you know, tie to the building.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And then I'm going to go ahead and uh, I may ask other uh, applicants this, because it's a new question, but um, do you currently have any stores that are um, union-run or union-operated? Where, where the employees of the store have op- have unionized?
Uh, n- no, we, we don't. We have LPAs in place, and we have a card and check in place here, uh, with UFCW Local.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and thank Spark. I appreciate your time and your commitment to the city of Sonoma and to uh, bring cannabis to the next level, and so thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and did you, I do?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have follow-up questions for any of the applicants from council? I can't see all of you, so if there's... Nope, okay. Um, all right, great. So, what do we do now, Kathy?
Public comment.
Oh, there it is. Oh, jeez, it's been so long. I figured we've already covered that. Um, great, so we're going to go ahead and open public comment. Um, again, if you're calling in, uh, go ahead and give us a star nine. If you're not calling in, go ahead and raise your hand, and we will recognize you for public comment, um, three minutes on the clock, and then uh, I'm seeing nobody raise their hand, so I'm going to go ahead and open it, and then raise your hand if you'd like to. Um, and then Latonya, if you, if you wouldn't mind, if we got any written public comment, let's go ahead and read.
We do. We have two.
All right.
First is from Danielle Crompton. Hi there. After reviewing the proposals, I feel as a mother and community member that Lighthouse is the right dispensary for Sonoma. Thank you. The second is from Mark Bodenhammer. Are all of the applicants applying for both retail storefront and delivery? There were some comments regarding the first group's application that made it sound like they were the only one proposing that service. In meeting with members of the community about the dispensary, that was expressed as a very important component. Just want to clarify which applicants are planning on proposing sharing plans for delivery. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff for leading a very detailed and thoughtful process.
All right, I'm seeing nobody rise for public comment. Oh, we've got one. We got Sebastian Juarez and Jay Rook. Let's bring in Sebastian. And I'll, hold on, Sebastian, let me get your timer situated here. And go.
Um, all right, great. Um, the time, I'm, it's because I've been pretty diligent in uh, this decision, and uh, this is a big decision, obviously, because it's going to ultimately impact uh, Sonoma uh, and uh, really kind of help the heartbeat of Sonoma itself. Um, as a uh, Sonoma County native and, and a Sonoma business owner, um, I find it um, really exciting to have this discussion uh, and to see it ongoing. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't uh, able to log on in time uh, to hear um, uh, Coastal's proposal, but um, I will start with public comment uh, with um, Justice Groan. Um, one of the biggest things that stood out to me uh, with Justice Groan is, is they have a lot of, uh, they're handing a lot of different pots out in the Midwest. Um, and I think it's important to recognize that Sonoma has its own heartbeat, and uh, the same applications that may work in the Midwest um, aren't going to work in Sonoma. Sonoma is very different. It's very unique. Um, things that, you know, would work in Healdsburg or Napa, um, don't work in the town of Sonoma. So, I think that's very important to take into consideration. Um, and also, I found it really disturbing. Um, it sounded kind of like John was trying to buy his way in to Sonoma, um, with legal counsel and throwing around millions of dollars. Um, it, it just, it seems really disingenuous and, and um, I, I, I just find that um, a little disturbing. Um, I see a lot of these companies, you know, mentioning LALUZ as um, their primary uh, potential partner in, in the local community. Um, and I just kind of wonder what they plan on doing with LALUZ. Um, uh, everybody kind of mentioned that they wanted potential hiring opportunities, um, which I assume is going to be fieldwork. Um, and also within the retail store. Um, you know, everybody also mentioned that they're prepared to pay above the minimum wage, which as we all have discussed uh, in recent years, um, Sonoma is raising it to fifteen. Um, you know, as a winery owner, um, around the plaza, I can't find an employee for less than twenty dollars an hour. So, I, I think that's really important to take into consideration. It's, it's great that they would be willing to pay above minimum wage, but I wonder if they're prepared to pay that twenty-plus dollars an hour for a very quality employee, uh, which brings me to the next point, um, the employee pool in Sonoma. Um, is that of the service industry? So, you're getting uh, restaurant workers. Uh, you're also going to get um, winery workers, um, people with a lot of experience. Um, so I wonder if they're willing to pay that. Um, lastly, um, well, actually, no, that was it. Um, I, I appreciate the time uh, for the comment council.
Thank you so much, Sebastian. Appreciate your time as well. All right, and under the three minutes, well done. All right, on to, we've got Jay Rook, and I'll start your time now.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to comment, and I just wanted to chime in and talk about the importance of this moment in time for Sonoma and the longer-term vision going through. And I, I think what's really important is that, uh, I wanted to come out and support Jordan and his role in the community and the longer-term plays that he's made here. And I think this is something that we really need to get right the first time through and make this work. And so, one of the things that's really important to me is, is someone who's got skin in the game and understands the local landscape, and also has a track record here. And uh, Jordan's commitment to the community through his board service, through the mentoring alliance, uh, and committing one million dollars to the community. As anyone who uh, works in the nonprofit sector here knows, one million dollars is a huge deal. And if we're talking about, you know, uh, proof and practice of commitment to the community, uh, you know, Jordan's recently taken on a Kibble Sat tasting room with uh, by person, the Shell Bill Grill, doing a really nice upgrade there during the During the pandemic, they were literally shut down and were able to donate over 750 meals to the community in addition to their meal delivery program that they were doing. And Jordan's business growth and I think proof of the ability to execute on a concept. I think we're at a stage where a lot of these visions that everyone's putting forth sound really attractive and everyone's excited for where this is gonna go right now. But I just really want to emphasize that there's bidding on a project is very different than delivering on a project. And as we take a long-term play here and want to get this right the first time through, that we pay attention to who's got a business track record of innovation, growth, service in the community, and making things happen. If we think about Jordan's role with starting a business at Kibblestat in Glen Allen, then Free Flow Wines, and then bringing jobs in some with 8th Street East, and now the Kibblestat Tasting Room, et cetera. There's a long track record here and I think what I really appreciate about Jordan's approach is that it's been deeply community minded from the beginning and it's not just lip service. And so the fact that they've approached to this bidding process and that he's got the track record within the community, it makes me feel really good about that prospect. And so I asked the council to really consider that we look at who's the right purveyor to see this through? Who's got the vision? Who's got the track record and the ability? And let's make sure we go quality this time around because we have pickups. It's gonna be so much more costly and problematic to try to unring this bell and do things over and want to come out and publicly support Jordan and coastal's project. Thank you.
Thank you Jay Rook. Do you have anybody else for public comment? We have no other written comments, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. And bring it back to the council for discussion.
Can I go?
You may.
Okay, so first I just wanted to clarify the process. Are we saying which of the applicants we want to see go to the next round? That's, so it could be more than one?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, so I appreciate everyone's participation in the process. And I just want to take, even though it's getting late, a brief moment to go over the history of this process. We, back when Gary Edwards was on the council, we embarked in a study. We had a community survey and at the end of that, the council voted three to two to have no marijuana dispensary. And then Logan Harvey joined the council and we voted Rachel Hunley, myself, and Logan Harvey voted three to two to have a marijuana dispensary. And then this process was underway. So my point being, we are multiple years into this process and it's nice to have it coming to the point tonight where we're actually working on selecting somebody. So I think that's really great. And so I think a lot, there was a lot of great work put into this. And some of the criteria that I thought were the most interesting and important were number one, how much experience the operator has. And number two, I care a lot about the commitment to the community. I think those two things are super important. So in terms of experience, I don't think it's really hard to match the experience of Spark. So I would like to see them go forward. I respect the people on their team. They're super knowledgeable. And then they're also growers and they're local. So I, and I know Eric has been involved from the very start of our own process. And I really appreciate that participation. And of course, Amy is a statewide expert in this field and, you know, has served as a resource for our town on this topic. So I'm, I really want to see them go forward. And then the second one I'd like to see go forward is Justice Grown, kind of for two reasons. I think the work that they do professionally, not related to the marijuana dispensary, is so relevant to what's happening in our streets today. Wrongful conviction, I mean, their civil rights work is, it appears to be based primarily around civil rights for inmates and people charged. And so I think that where they're coming from really speaks to our times. And then I think with regard to longevity, nobody has worked longer in this community on the issue of bringing a dispensary to Sonoma than Ken and Jewel. They've put in a tremendous amount of work. And I think, you know, as I said, Jewel being a board member of one of the, you know, of the first ever marijuana dispensaries. And I think that commitment to our community and also the people they're partnered with would be great for our town. So those were the two that I'd like to see go forward. The other ones put together tremendous packages. And I don't think it's necessary for me to say why I didn't select them. But I think they all did a great job and, and those were just some of the reasons why I would like those two to go forward.
Okay, who wants to go next? It's not gonna be me. Got a stalemate here.
I'll go. This is Madeline. So it's kind of interesting. I still don't support a dispensary in the city of Sonoma. I've never made that a secret. However, I do know the importance for certain segments of our population that they use the product for different reasons. And so I, I respect that. You know, there were times people even made fun of me that I was older and I was afraid of drugs. But I explained I grew up in the 60s in San Francisco and believe me, this ain't nothing. But that's okay. So it's kind of interesting. I am totally amazed by the professionalism of each one of these groups. I, I just really am amazed and would be proud to have any one of them here. I'm concerned of a discussion of more than one dispensary because I'm not going wild on this one. But I, you know, I, I, like you Amy, I'm very impressed with Spark. And it's almost like they had an inroads in the beginning because they were consultants for us. They were here to speak to people in public forums, so I think they have an edge. I don't know whether that's fair or not. And I still like Coastal. There's nothing wrong with pushing the envelope. And did it scare people? Possibly. And unfortunately, I like all four. So if anybody, I mean, if there's anyone, anyone going to come out of this, I, I like right now, I think it would be Spark and Coastal. I like some of the things that both of these organizations have gunned, done, offered the city. So that's where I am right now. I really like them all, so I don't know what other people are gonna say.
Thank you. Go ahead David.
Yeah, I'll go next. Since we're going down the memory lane. Yes, I did vote against the dispensary in Sonoma because I really felt that it should be outside of the Sonoma. My biggest concern is with traffic and kind of why I asked the question. I would not like to see more than one at the beginning because give the business a chance. Tonight, it's hard because I think that all four that have spoke, you know, they all have a great face to the community. I like through this process how members like Ken Brown and Jewel got together with, you know, an organization, because I was kind of wondering how that was gonna work when it came to the end of it. So I would love to move through this. I do like Spark. Justice Grown did a great presentation. I'd like to see them move forward. I believe that Coastal has, has shown some opportunity. And even Lighthouse Sonoma, you know, they picked somebody local. If it was up to me, I would move them all four through the process. And like Councilmember Harrington said earlier, you know, this has been a long process. So making the right decision is gonna be very important. And if I had to rate them, I would rate Spark number one, Justice Grown number two, Coastal number three, and Lighthouse Sonoma number four at this time.
All right.
All right, we'll go next. This has certainly been a, a long and interesting process. The first occasion I had to talk about cannabis was actually in 2015. The reign, a very long process to this point, and I find it very exciting. And it's just interesting to see how rapidly the world of cannabis businesses are thing. Oh God, am I frozen?
You're a little broken up. You're all choppy.
How do we get Rachel back?
We just send her some like positive vibes through the... Do it.
Do you have any sage? That'll get her back.
Logan, did you bring the sage?
Yes, yes, I always bring the sage.
Get on that.
It comes with my wisdom.
It's coming back.
Did I freeze?
You froze.
Yeah.
I know you're really frozen, but I think it's a picture.
Well, no, it just kicked me off, so I'm on my phone right now. So apologies for that. I don't know what you, how much you heard before I froze, but it has been a long process indeed, at least five years with my involvement. And I know that there were council members prior to me, including Ken Brown, who worked really hard for this. So it's, this has been a long time coming in Sonoma and I'm thrilled to be able to be here for this very exciting moment. You know, all of the candidates were impressive for different reasons. I could see why they were each scored the way that they were. The, the businesses, since this is, the process is to whittle this down because there can be one in the end. The two that I would certainly move forward are Spark. I think that, you know, the model that's becoming apparently popular and at least it's been successful in the style of searches that cities are doing with consultants such as HDL seem to favor companies that do have venture capital funding and have these more national models. And just knowing what I know about the Sonoma business community and wanting something that has truly a local flavor to it, Spark is certainly a contender for that. And then second, secondly, just, you know, vision wise and, you know, similar histories of the members involved would be Justice Grown. And then as a third, there's a couple of things with Lighthouse, which I wish had been a little better in the application. They had said that they would commit to a higher starting wage and that would, and have a peace agreement prior to 19 employees. And contingent on those things, I would also move Lighthouse forward because I feel like they seem to have the best understanding of the Sonoma market and what would be sort of the most, like financially successful business. So those would be the three that I would move forward.
All right, thank you. So it looks like right now we have Amy with Justice Grown and Spark, Madeline with Spark and Coastal, Rachel with Spark and Justice Grown, David supporting all three. You know, I think everybody's really done a fantastic job. I think any of these four applicants would be appropriate in Sonoma, would handle, handle this town with the respect that it deserves, treat their employees with respect, and really be a good partner for the city with all the issues that we have. But I don't want to, I want to, you know, I think we do need to whittle it down as we move into the location selection. To me, the, the two that were most impressive were, I, I thought that Spark, I, for me, really it was three. It was Spark, it was Justice Grown, and it was, and it was Coastal. I thought that all three of them had good local connections. Spark, to me, has the best local connection. They really kind of grew up here. They are a local producer. I know that they have serious commitments to nonprofits in the valley and are, and that are real and, and happening. I think Justice Grown's work with, with legal advocacy is really, really strong. And I think that they are a good producer in that way. And I'm, I'm impressed with a lot of that work. I also think, you know, they, they seem to have quite a few operations and so they, they have similar experience to Spark, although none of it's in California, which is a little bit of a concern to me. And then Coastal put together a really solid application. For me, I think, you know, I, I'm happy with those three. I'd be happy also with Justice Grown and Spark. I'm not sure where council wants to go or how we vote on this. But I think we should move forward with either two or three into the next round.
Do we make a motion Jeff?
Yes, let's do that.
All right, I make a motion that we move forward Justice Grown and Spark.
Second.
A roll call vote? Wendy Atkins?
Yes, Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte.
So what do we do? I, I don't, I guess, I don't know what I'm doing here. Second rate, what do they call that? Second rank voting?
No, we're on a motion. After this, if, if, if this motion passed, then Justice Grown and Spark would tell us their locations and we would vote again at the end about whether to pick Justice Grown or Spark, basically.
Well, okay, yeah.
And Mayor Harvey. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Yeah. All right. And there we go. Okay, so my agenda is closed now.
Thank you to all applicants.
Yeah, thank you so much applicants for the time. I appreciate what you put into your applications. And I, I appreciate it. And if we do move forward to another dispensary, I look forward to seeing you back because I think you all brought a lot to the table. And thank you so much. So we're moving on to item 7.1, Councilmember Reports and Comment, Comments. We have councilmembers who are applying to various boards and committees, local, countywide, regional. Any updates from a council member will be shared at this time? Do we have updates from council?
No.
I have one.
Okay, Amy, go ahead.
So at Sonoma Clean Power, we hired an economist to provide an economics study that we would base our rates on, looking out 10 years. And I asked Kathy to share it with everybody and you probably got it. It's some of the most interesting economic data about the proposed future of Sonoma that I've seen. But basically it shows Sonoma in a dip and not getting back to pre-COVID levels for the next decade. And so I just, if you have a moment to look at the PowerPoint presentation that was sent out, I felt the econ, the economist was really fascinating. And because we're using that data to set rates and predict future income for Sonoma Clean Power, I don't know, it was sort of a very different take than anything we've seen before. And so Kathy shared that with you, I think, and I just recommend that you check it out.
Thank you. Kathy, if you could resend that, we've got, we've got quite a, I think everybody's got a few emails recently, so if we could kind of be on top of the deck, that would be...
Sure, I can resend it. And it was sent out a couple days ago. Happy to resend it.
Thank you. I can always just search. You know, from SOTA, we all heard the presentation about Go Sonoma Act and Ask the Council. Pleased to see that. So that's kind of been the biggest thing on, on Measure M. And SOTA is moving forward with a new course on sales tax for roads construction, paving, smoothing our roads, which is something that, you know, everybody in the county supports strongly. And yeah, it's been an interesting process putting together about measure. Anybody else? All right, moving to City Manager Comments and Announcements.
Nothing at this time. Thank you Mayor Harvey.
City Attorney Comments.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Land Director Comments. All right, we'll go ahead and move into closed section. Conference with labor negotiators is what we have on the agenda. Do we, should we open up for public comment for our closed session? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we will be closing. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we will be closing this chat window, reopening when we close closed section and retiring to the closed session. Thank you.
So we leave this meeting and log back in?
Yep.
Correct.
Into, not into this Zoom chat, but into the one that goes to closed session for the labor negotiation.
I'll leave this meeting.